Annual Step Maintenance. Given the policy and the published salary schedule, I would request that the board regard the budget line to fund steps not as a supplemental item but as a basic contractual obligation of the college. While it is undoubtedly a challenge to balance any institutional budget, it seems vital to follow the most basic math of these annual steps. Excuse me. George Orwell wrote in 1984, "Freedom is the freedom to say that two plus two make four; if that is granted, all else follows." If two years plus two years somehow makes three years of service at NIC, the institution sends a chilling message to our community in terms of recruitment, retention, and basic integrity. Please honor the good faith agreement of the step's schedule. Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey. Our next agenda item is celebrating success, and we have with us Sergeant Andrew West. Sergeant West? Podium is yours.
Thank you. Get to my notes. Sergeant Swanson was not able to be here tonight due to a medical emergency, but thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. In 2008, we started as a pilot program here, a three-year pilot program. It kind of started in 2007 under then-Mass Sergeant Mike Kish, who is now the Command Sergeant Major of Recruiting and Retention for the State of Idaho. And what we wanted to do is, the National Guard is a big part of the community, more so than just, you know, with a present war situation and stuff like that. We were helping the community in lots of different ways, and we like to show our face in the community. And being a part of the college is a great way to do that as well. The ROTC program at North Idaho College is a two-year program. It's the only two-year ROTC program that I know of at a junior college, however, does feed into all four-year programs. All the credits do transfer directly into a four-year ROTC program if needed. One of the biggest things that Sergeant Swanson and I were talking about earlier today, and one of the biggest things that we wanted to talk about, was the fact that we feel that there's a lot of people that believe that there's a military obligation when you join the ROTC program at North Idaho College. And as a two-year program, there is no military obligation whatsoever. And I think they see the uniforms sometimes, and they say, "I don't want to join the Army." But what ROTC is, is leadership courses. It's, as you know, probably, there's a lot of executive recruiters that pull out of the military. High-level, high-ranking officers are recruited to be CEOs and CFOs of major corporations. What we want to do is show people that, or show the students that, you know, just because there's great leadership courses, there's not necessarily a military obligation to go along with that. So that's one of the things that we were talking about. And we have, I have one of my students here with me today, Carl Luellen, who was just going to talk a little bit about, a little bit about his experience with ROTC.
Thank you, Sergeant West, and thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you. Since fall, I have been a student here at NIC and have enjoyed many of the first-year classes this school has to offer, but none have I found more rewarding in my personal experience in the ROTC program. From the military science, learning how to speak in front of people, also practicing land navigation, and as we did for our last class, combatives, but also from the physical training aspect. I hope you will believe me because it's absolutely true, but fall of this last year, I was 215 pounds, and now I'm 165, thanks to the work of Sergeant Swanson, Sergeant West here, and Captain Keaton when he took over the classes. I have to say, this has been a very rewarding class. I look forward to moving on to MS2, and I hope you all consider trying to expand this program if at all possible. Thank you very much for your time in the, well, thank you very much for allowing me to speak in front of you tonight. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions, Carl? Thank you very much.
My pleasure. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Is there any other questions regarding the program itself?
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to hear about your diet plan. And how hard is it? Now, that's, you have a fantastic program. Kudos to you.
Mr. Chair. Yes.
I guess I have one question and one statement. The question would be, is there anything that we can do to assist you, or do you have a specific request to how you want to disseminate, you know, more about the program, or maybe to clarify some of those misconceptions? Is there some way that you're proposing to do that? Is there anything we need to help you with that?
Well, one of the things that we struggled with a little bit this last semester, and it was all right previous to this past year, we had a, Captain Keaton, who was part of the program, was getting ready for deployment, and there was just certain issues that prevented us from having a lot of face time at the college. As you know, the college provides us with an office so we can man office hours, and provides us with a classroom at the Lee Kildare Hall, and also at the gym. That, for us, has been pretty much all we've asked for, and it has worked out tremendously. The only problems we've ever had is working with the athletic department during the, during the fall, during the cold weather sports, and getting gym time versus, you know, the basketball team practicing and stuff like that. But we've always been very flexible and willing to make them run outside, even if it is cold out, so.
Well, as trustee Banducci, I command you, and as major Banducci, I salute you. Fine job.
Sir.
Any other questions? Sergeant West, I have a question. Could you kind of describe for me, or describe for us a little bit, like, the number of program participants that you have, and maybe how many hours a week that your participants take part in your programs?
Yeah, the 100 and 200 level of physical fitness class, last semester, we had 19 students enrolled, and it's an hour in the morning at 7:00 a.m., Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And Sergeant Swanson is very good at making sure they stay that full hour. But I was actually in that class as well. The leadership classes are at 3:00 in the afternoon on Wednesdays. The 200 level are the same time on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We've had a little bit of trouble with the leadership classes, with the enrollment numbers. Last semester, we had six. Like I said, it might be because it's later on in the day, and people are wanting to go home at that time, or possibly it's just because they think that there's a military obligation that goes along with the ROTC. And one of the things that Sergeant Swanson and I wanted to do is possibly just show a little bit more face around the, around the college, and approach people, maybe not necessarily in uniform, but, you know, just as normal faculty, so.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Any other questions? Thank you very much for your presentation here this evening.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item are the constituent reports, and first up is ASNC, Benaya Achievers, and Christopher Dean.
Twins of a different mother.
I can't stay away from this podium. Good evening, Dr. Dunlap, Mr. Chair, Board, and guests. Tonight, I'd like to come up here and introduce Benaya Achievers. He, Benaya came in as a senator, moved up to Pro temp, and has just done a fantastic job in ASNC, and he was elected to president, and I just want to introduce him and let him go, so, thank you.
And you're wishing us goodbye at the same time?
I'm wishing you good luck.
Better.
Thank you very much, Chris. Good evening, Dr. Dunlap, Chairman Howard, the Board, and esteemed guests. I'd like to begin by sharing my appreciation for some of the very prominent individuals that have helped us out throughout this last year. Some people that have greatly helped us out for the past two semesters include outgoing President Christopher Dean, outgoing ASNC board members Duncan Menzies, Olivia Burkett, and Gustav Lester, and the incoming board members. For their commitment to the service, I'd like to thank them. They are Vice President Joshua Brands, Senators Richard Fortman, Andy Hughes, Israel Nehemiah Musonda, Josh Swan, Alex Wordalkivulis, Trey Keo, James Durham, and Bob Mertens. And I believe it's very important to give honor to where honors due, and I'd like to give a special thank you to Heather Erickson and Alex Harris for all their help in student development and what they do for NIC and ASNC. I'd like to thank Steve McGorty, our financial manager, John Totten, and Jacob Rothrock at Outdoor Pursuits, and Jessica Johansson in Rex Sports. And I'd also like to thank Dr. Dunlap, Lita Burns, Mark Browning, Grayden Stanley, and the entire President's Cabinet for the awesome job they've done, and I'm looking very forward to working with you all. So, thank you so much to everyone. I'm very just thankful to be here before you in this position. I'd like to talk a little bit about ASNC's vision for the future. ASNC is planning on continuing to develop the experience for students. As the following goals will be focused on throughout the next year for ASNC, continuing to work with the Board of Trustees, Administration, Faculty, and Staff on projects like the Student Recreation Center project, the Student Multicultural Center project, providing clubs with leadership development opportunities, and exploring opportunities for students to get involved in Roots, NIC's community garden project. These are just several of our goals moving forward. ASNC Vice President Joshua Brands and myself, as well as some, potentially, some other ASNC representatives, will be active throughout the summer by holding summer office hours and working on projects like these. I'd like to address a little bit on ASNC's request for a $3 ASNC student fee. I'd like to just hit on the main point for our request, is that we would like to utilize this fee increase to fund student leadership development opportunities for clubs and club leaders. It's an easy way to get students involved on campus because there's a huge variety of clubs. We've seen tremendous club growth. We currently have 25 active clubs, and 10 of those clubs have been initiated in the past two months, so that's pretty impressive. And I'm just very excited to see where this goes, and I believe the funds would provide for organizing a symposium, or rather, conference for club leadership, and other things like participating in the NIC Challenge Course, which John Totten and Jessica Johansson all help out with. So, I'm just really excited for moving forward with this next year, and that's all we have from ASNC. Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the board?
I'd just like to compliment on his fine bow tie.
Thank you.
Stylish.
Benaya, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Our next reporter is from Staff Assembly, Nancy Edwards. Welcome, Nancy.
Thank you, Chairman Howard, trustees, and President Dunlap. My name is Nancy Edwards, and I will be the chair for Staff Assembly again in 2013-14. May has been a very busy month. First, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank all of those who participated in making graduation such a success. As we all know, the campus looked beautiful, and everyone did a great job in preparing for that day, which, as you can imagine, is no small task. Staff Assembly also selected our Staff Appreciation Award winners, who were announced, excuse me, at the commencement breakfast. Congratulations to Kelly Hopkins, Mindy Patterson, and Heather Erickson. Thank you to the NIC Foundation for once again providing for those Staff Appreciation Awards. Staff Assembly also conducted elections for new officers. The vice chair will be Carol Jones, Secretary Teresa Henderson, Senators Heidi Schrader, Lynn Covey, and Neshay Noble. Senate alternates will be Josh Gittle and Mindy Patterson. The Staff Executive Committee will be meeting this summer to discuss our strategic plan for the upcoming year. Any questions?
Just any questions, Ron?
I've, this is the first time I was ever sitting on the other side of the podium when there was a graduation. It was an incredible experience there, from the beginning, the opening music, to Christopher's closing comments, and everything in between there. It was incredible, and I just want to say that for all the work that went into that, the recognition with that, it was a beautiful event, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Next reporter is from the Faculty Assembly, Michelle Lippard.
Good evening, Chairman Howard, Board, President Dunlap. I'd like to begin by introducing myself. My name is Michelle Lippard. I'm a philosophy instructor here, and the newly-elected chair of the Faculty Assembly. You may or may not remember, but just a month ago, you granted me tenure. I'm one of those people who came up through the ranks, years as an adjunct instructor, years as special appointment, and then finally tenure track. I'd like to take this moment to thank my faculty evaluative team, my, the tenure committee, my division chair, the dean, vice president for instruction, the president, and the board for your acknowledgement of my work and your confidence in me. In addition to my work here, I'm a 14-year veteran of the post-fall school board, so I am much more accustomed to being in your seat than to be standing up here giving a report. I know the tremendous amount of work board service requires, and the fact that it can place you in uncomfortable positions. That "only one meeting a month" lie that they told you when you were running, you've now seen is a lie. But I am going to draw on my experience of 14 years and work with the assumption that you want these reports to be short, sweet, and to the point. My report. As President Dunlap said last Friday, last Friday was, NIC was the happiest place in the world? Were those your words? We graduated the largest class in school history. As the students celebrated, the faculty remembered all the lectures, exams, papers, individual tutoring, and emails that we answered. We remembered, too, all the laughter, the joy, and the occasional tears that we shared with those students through the years. It's always a bittersweet moment for us. Yesterday, our grades were due. Like most faculty members, I've spent the last several days grading. My own tally was 160 exams and 80 final essays. Right now, taking a very deep breath, because in only a week and a half, summer school begins for us. At our last Faculty Assembly meeting, we elected officers. Our returning vice chair is Christina Edmondson, who I believe is here. Laura Templeman is returning as secretary and has taken on the role of treasurer as well. With a budget of $750, we thought she could handle that. We also discussed at our last Faculty Assembly meeting the board's decision to conduct a workshop on tenure. If the decision is to hold this workshop over the summer, I have a list of faculty members who would be willing to offer input, participate in the workshop, or any other tasks that the board feels would be helpful. Please let us know how we could be of assistance. That concludes my report. I would, again, would like to thank you for your service to the college and to our community. Are there any questions?
Questions of Michelle.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next reporter is from Audrey Bourne on the Senate.
Good evening, Chairman Howard, Members of the Board, President Dunlap. Before I present my report regarding Senate, I would like to briefly introduce myself. My name, of course, is Audrey Bourne, and I have had the privilege to teach here at NIC in Communication Studies for the past eight years, and I am honored to serve as chair of the College Senate for this next academic year. So hello. As per my report concerning the last Senate meeting, which was held this last Thursday, the new senators were announced, I was elected as chair, and please know that the other officers will be elected at the first meeting in August. We continue to discuss the Committee Restructure draft from the President's Cabinet, and we discuss the Senate year-end statement. The year-end statement reflects a summary of this past year's events, and how Senate anticipates success in realizing its goals for next year. Discussion continued regarding these items this week during a special meeting that took place online via the NIC shared site, which is via the portal and NIC email. The feedback was compiled to create a final document, or final documents, excuse me, pertaining to the year-end statement and our current feedback to the Committee Restructure draft. Voting concludes today, and if passed, these documents will be sent to President Dunlap in hopes that they are shared with the Board of Trustees and the President's Cabinet. And this concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions, Audrey? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next reporter is from the President, President Dunlap.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, trustees, and good evening to colleagues and constituents. My report tonight will be relatively short, and I want to reiterate what a glorious day Friday was with graduation. It was extremely heartfelt, and the effort that went into making that day happen was incredible by the faculty and staff on this campus. And everything from the breakfast through the graduation, and then I understand there was a quasi-official golfing event in the afternoon that even include costumes by some areas on campus was quite remarkable. And so I want to thank everybody for your participation, for making Friday such a wonderful experience for the students and for all of us who participated. Second of all, I want to congratulate the new constituent leaders, Michelle, and Benaya, and Nancy, and Audrey. Not everyone likes to step up to a leadership position, and these four individuals did, and they are ready to help shoulder some of the work and burden of next year. And so thank you very much for assuming that role of responsibility. I've asked Mark Browning to report out on an update on the Dyke and where we are, as well as the upcoming J-FAC tour, which will take place in North Idaho this year. So, Mark?
Thanks, President. You got me all right, Andy? All right.
I'll let him yell at you. It's good. Thank you, sir. Members of the board, let's start with the issue of Roseberry Drive and the Dyke row. We had, I had a meeting with esteemed Senior Vice President of Finance and Resource, Ron Dorn, and representatives from the city. I'm trying to get back in his good graces after the breakfast. We met with some representatives from the city about the issue, the work, preliminary work to be done on the study to get the independent certification is moving forward. The cost estimates are coming in considerably higher than what we first forecast. In fact, right now, they are at approximately $510,000 total for the project, of which the college has committed to approximately half. From the city's perspective, there may be some savings, fairly minimal, maybe $10,000 or $15,000, that they may be able to trim off of that, but we're, we being the college, are going to be on the hook for approximately a quarter of a million dollars of that project. That does not get the work done. That simply is the work to tell us what needs to be done in order for the Dyke to be certified. Everyone's aware of the reasons why the Dyke has to be recertified in the wake of Katrina in 2005 and FEMA. So, initial estimates are very rough, but it could be somewhere in the neighborhood of three-quarters of a million dollars to a million dollars to actually do the work. And for that, the city will, will look at creative financing to do that. But from the college perspective, we're going to be on the hook for approximately a quarter of a million dollars. Whether or not that's paid out of this fiscal year or next fiscal year, we're working between the two fiscal offices to see just exactly when that's got to be done. The certification actually expires at the start of the federal fiscal year, this year, '13. We do have commitments from FEMA that while we've already started this process, they will continue what they call a soft certification, in that, you know, we're not going to have the licensure completely revoked, but the soft deadline at this point is 2015, so. And it is anticipated that the preliminary work will be done, and that whatever that work dictates, dictates in terms of reinforcing revision as far as some of the trees and all of that, that the report we anticipate will say that that work will be done in time for certification in '15. The early reports are that not all of the trees would have to be removed, and in fact, the number is thought to be somewhere around half, but it's, from the city's perspective, some of what they're hearing is that a lot of that would be younger stock that is not nearly as noticeable, that most of the older majestic trees, if they are in good health from the arborist standpoint, that they certainly will stay, which certainly will help the aesthetics here. So, the ticket's $250,000 large at this point. Any questions on the Dykes as we keep going?
Any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mark, did you, I don't think you said the college is committed to paying for the, between the $750,000 and $1 million, any of that? That would all be the city of Coeur d'Alene?
That is, that is my understanding. That is correct. Yep.
Yep.
Only commitment we have is for up to $250,000 at this point in time.
For the study?
Yes.
Correct.
Thank you.
Which is substantial.
Ancillary topic, but related possibly, I don't know. If in that discussion, did you broach the subject of the annexation also while you're talking about the Dyke World and the beach and all the rest of that? Has the annexation discussion come back up? I've promised Gary Stark I'm going to bird dog that.
There were some discussions about annexation. I think we're a little bit of a standoff as to, you know, who wants to make the next step on the dance floor, and I think there's probably some analysis in discussions with the President as to what we ought to do next, but I think those would be good discussions with the President at this point, so.
Again, Mark, for a point of clarification, you said between $750,000 and $1 million, and the study's going to cost how much?
About $510,000 right now. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, about $510,000 is what they're estimating right now. Could get down somewhere $495,000 to $500,000, of which we're on for half. So, yeah, half a million dollars to tell us what to do.
I have no comment.
I think you and I would both agree we're in the wrong business.
Judy?
So, we won't ask you to go out on a limb to tell us anymore about it?
Thank you. On the topic of the J-FAC... On the topic of the J-FAC, on topics that will cost us significantly less, that may have some real upside, the Joint Finance Appropriation Committee will be touring North Idaho, June 4th, 5th, or 5th, 6th, and 7th. They actually will arrive here the evening of Tuesday, the 4th. They'll be here, they'll be touring some areas in Post Falls and State Line early Wednesday morning, the 5th. They will arrive here on campus at 9:30. We will have them for approximately two hours to do a tour here on campus. I'm setting up that tour to get to some of our facilities, which will include facilities here on campus, and we're going to get them to our welding facility and lab out in the industrial park. We'll get them there on a very tight schedule. We'll have them back here by 11:45. They then conduct a business meet, they have lunch, and then a business meeting here, and then they're off to Sandpoint for the rest of the afternoon. Thursday evening, which I believe is June 6th, we will have an event at the Sandpoint Center from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., to which we all would love you to attend if it's at all possible, which will include not only hosting a dinner for the members of the committee, but it will also be the official welcoming of our four-year partner, Lewis Clark State College, to the Sandpoint Center. So, we'll have some details out to you as well, and then the members of the committee will tour the Sandpoint Center Friday morning before they adjourn Friday midday. So, it's a fairly compact schedule. We'll have them for approximately two hours here at main campus in Coeur d'Alene, then Thursday evening for the dinner, then Friday morning for the tour. That Friday morning is also, it coincides with the exact same day that President Dunlap, along with President Fernandez of Lewis Clark, and President Burnett of the University of Idaho, will be doing a panel with trustee Nielsen and some other business and industry leaders in town as part of the chamber series that Friday morning. So, Vice President Stanley will lead the tour in, in Sandpoint, along with our Sandpoint folks Friday morning. But, so we're setting up the schedule there to get them around to our facilities here, showing them some of the good things that are happening, and then some of our needs as well. We're trying to keep a real mix there.
Any questions? Doug?
Doug, tell to one of my questions. The education and the economy, a conversation with the community. That's the Friday morning event. Are we, trustees, would you like us there for that, to support that? Is that appropriate?
Yes.
I had the flyer. I didn't know. Mr. Chairman, if there's, if there's going to be more than two of you, we need to know to notice it as, as that there'll be three of you or more there. So, we'll probably just notice that because trustee Nielsen will be there as a participant. So, if trustee Van Duce will be there, and if one or more of you show up, we actually have to post it notice as a meeting. So, we'll do that as a precaution, that you may be there as participants and spectators.
Judy?
Following up on J-FAC being here, will there be, or was there any occasion for trustees to visit with J-FAC while they're on this campus, so they can see all the things we want them to think about while they're in Boise?
That is part of the tour here, but it is very confined. As you know, you've been through these, they keep the sideboards up very high on those. We tried to combine one of their events Friday morning to Thursday evening, and we're politely but sternly told, please do not mess with our schedule. Here's when you will have us, here's what we need. So, the best opportunity for trustees to interact with those folks will be at the dinner Thursday evening.
Is which time?
Thursday evening from 6:00 to 8:00 in Sandpoint.
Up in Sandpoint, rather than here on campus? Because often...
That really is, they're going to be fairly self-contained here, and fairly locked down in their business meeting, and then the quick tour here. The best way to work one-on-one with them would be at that dinner.
Right. Will we be showing them the head corridor and how well that's done, and how much we look forward to their help for the joint use building?
We plan to make a very strong case that we would love to have their partnership and participation in our plans moving forward.
We'd want them to feel left out. Okay.
Sweet. That's exactly what we're going to tell them, that we value their partnership such that we don't want them to be left out of this great project.
Well, I think the point is partnership, not only with J-FAC, but the magic of the three institutions working together. I think we're the poster child of that, and I don't mind bragging about it when they're here, so.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you for making that happen.
Any other questions?
Is, is it mandatory for these J-FAC to be at that panel discussion on Friday morning?
They need to, quite honestly, have a pretty good excuse if they're going to miss. It's generally all 20 are here. It takes something that's been planned months in advance, or in illness generally for them to get out of it. Yeah.
Any other questions? Mark, before you settle back down in your seat there, I want to go back to the Dyke Trees report. When is that report due? You may have said that, but I missed it.
I believe, they're going to have that done this fall, right? Yeah. I want to say September 15th was the date that I have, and I might have that as, I believe that they're going to have the preliminary, the first draft of the study should be done by mid-September is when we should have our hands on it.
So, a first draft, I guess I'm trying to get some sense of a guideline, a timeline for not just the report, but also the payments. What do you have to offer on that regard?
In conversations with Ron, I think he can probably speak to it a little better than I, but at this point, they're probably going to need some of it fairly soon, probably before the end of the fiscal year. Whether or not it's the entire amount, I think we'll, we'll let folks who deal with those types of numbers work out.
Do you have any additional information on that, Ron?
I don't. I initially, when I had the discussions with them, and I wanted to do half in this fiscal year and half the next fiscal year, and by this fiscal year now, I mean fiscal year 2014. Initially, the timeline would have allowed me to pay part in fiscal year '13 and part in '14, but obviously, that's not going to happen now. So, I'm going to try to just pay half in the first part of '14, and probably, since the study will be done, the second half will come after the calendar year begins in '14. But it pretty much will all be due now in '14. I won't get to split it out like I had thought originally.
Judy?
Following up on that, you have, at this point, the sense that the cost to remove the trees is to be borne by the city. Do you see any ripples in that, and that they're on our, near our campus, and what impacts it would still have on our campus?
One impact that it might have is, once those trees are taken out, and that generally reduces the windbreak, we probably need to be looking at the trees we actually have on campus and doing a study of those and seeing which ones ought to come down. That probably would be the biggest impact that I can think of right now that I've had discussions. It will change what, it will change.
Considerably.
Yeah.
Even the air conditioning in the buildings will change because of the shade of the trees.
I think all those conditions will change, and there'll also be, I think, a considerable, considerable amount of work to be done with the public to get them to understand why the trees have to come out. Not only because of certification, but the trees, that if they're, if they're deemed not to be healthy, then that's, you know, there's a risk there, and that it's not, that we're just willy-nilly cutting down trees, but there's a purpose for it. And there will be, there'll be some backlash, I expect, over that.
Boy, Mark, I just got my arms around the half a million dollars for a study to earn a million-dollar project. I'm still struggling with that.
That makes two of us.
Mr. Dorn, when you look at that, is if we put this out to bid for the study, when you look at the size of that and what it entails, there's got to be companies that have done this, there's levies all over, go down towards Latrina and the rest of these places where all these levy work is being done. I just can't imagine that it's a half a million dollars for a study.
Well, member Nielsen, this has really all been handled by the city. That's why...
If you could help them, Ron, for a commission.
A discount. That's why we tried to limit our commitment, as we did on the study. I tried to limit, but the city has taken the lead on this, and when the, the trees come down, there's been a negotiation about a year ago on that, trying to do some of that, and I say ourselves, between the city and ourselves, the small trees, to hold the cost down, to have our, our crews, between the city and ourselves, try to do some of that to hold the cost down. But, we have not been involved in procuring the study, and I don't know whether it was bid out or not. I assume it was large enough that they, they would have had to done that, but I don't know that.
Judy?
Just following up then on that many trees going down, let's see, I guess the city does that, so whatever revenue can be gained from selling the trees goes back to the city. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on the, those two reports? President Dunlap, then?
Just a point of clarification. Ron, you had mentioned previously that the city may be locked into using a particular firm to do the study because they have a state contract?
President Dunlap, I don't think the city is locked into that. I don't think they have to follow the same guidelines we do, because they're not using Department of Public Works money. When we, when we use Department of Public, Public Works money for a big project, we're locked in to whom we can use to do that project, the state tells us. But I don't think it's the case with this.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Also, as we've discussed before, there is concern about enrollment trends going into next year. As part of our budget assumptions, we are assuming that there will be a budget decline, possibly on the order of 5%. We've seen a, a decline for our summer enrollment, and we've seen where our sister institution, CSI, has had a significant decline, both with summer and fall enrollment. So, I've asked Lita to report out on those measures that we utilize to expand and contract that relate to budgetary issues that support the expansion or contraction of those enrollments. So, Dr. Burns?
Chairman Howard, Board of Trustees, we have taken a very proactive approach at looking at the impact that a decline in enrollment may have for us, particularly as it relates to the budget. So, the division chairs and the deans have examined our decrease in enrollment for summer, and have already begun to close some course offerings, because at this point, about 10 days before we're going to start our summer school session, we, you know, had zero enrollment or a very low enrollment in some courses. So, we actually have closed a number of sections to address that. And again, by closing sections means that we don't hire the adjunct faculty, and obviously, then it causes a decrease in the amount, the cost of summer school. In addition, I've asked the division chairs and the deans to look at anticipating an addition, not an additional, but because we've already planned for a 5% decrease, but looking at what a 5% to 7% decrease in enrollment to our fall semester might do, and the steps that we would take to address that. So, they have begun, began to identify sections in our fall class schedule that would be closed if the enrollment does not occur, and a strategic plan to, to manage that. Certainly, we want to make sure that we have, it's a bit of a balancing act, because we want to make sure that we have enough of a selection and enough available seats to students who want to come to class, so that when they go to sign up for class, there's actually a seat available to them. But we also want to do our best to make sure that every section that we have is as full as it can possibly be, so that we utilize our faculty to the best ability that we can. And then also to make sure that we provide enough of our core education courses, so that students can be assured of being able to come to North Idaho and get, meet their core requirements, as, as they're looking at putting together the courses that will lead to programs, and then lead to transfer as well. So, today, as we met before people began to leave for summer school, I was very pleased with the response that I received from both the division chairs and the deans. They have been extremely responsive to this request from me, and have identified a number of classes and a number of strategies to be able to meet a potential decline in enrollment for fall.
Thank you. Any questions? Lita? Judy?
Great report, thank you. And it's kind of like gazing in a crystal ball, it's not real clear. But I heard you, I want to be sure I heard you say, that one of the things you measure is you choose the classes that will need to be either shrunk, reduced, whatever, that the classes that are critical for someone's continuing progress, that needs to happen in the fall, so they can take whatever it is next, that those somehow, you figure on a way to keep providing that opportunity, so that the balance of the sequence and the transferability, some of those things that have ripples beyond just that class, you're able to factor in and make happen?
Chairman Howard, trustee Meyer, yes, exactly. It would be nice if we could say, this is our specific number, and, you know, if any class falls beyond this number, we won't offer it. But that's, there's no way to do that, because we certainly do have students who are in a degree plan to get either a certificate or a degree from North Idaho College, or who we have committed to a two-year plan based on their transfer to a four-year institution. And it might be that we only offer a particular course once every other year, or once, you know, in a sequence. And so, we cannot eliminate that class and then interfere with somebody's progression, either to a certificate degree or to a transfer. So, again, we have to be very strategic about how we do this.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
President Joe, in the proposed plant fund budget, we have an enrollment contingency of $341,000. Can you explain, we would access that if we needed to, if we had a decrease? Is that correct?
And what's it for?
You want to, I'm going to ask Ron to address that.
Trustee Wood, I think that's the amount that appears in the plant fund portion of our, our budget, and yes, that's, that's what it would be there for, to, to access that if we need to, in part. But I think, as, as Lita has said, that, you know, I think the wise approach to begin with is to go through an exercise of looking at reducing the expenditures before we go into that, before we go into that contingency fund for enrollment. And we've talked about that at PC, and we're going to do that institution-wide, over the plan for that at the retreat, to look at how we would reduce our overall, our budgets to account for this enrollment shortfall. So, it is there, but I'd rather see us go through the other exercise before we tap into that.
Sure, which would be responsible to reduce our adjunct. But I would be curious of how much of our enrollment contingency fund did we use last year, or our current year, I should say?
Probably in the grand scheme of things, all of it.
Okay. And that's because we experienced additional enrollment?
We, we budgeted for a 3% enrollment increase, which obviously, we didn't, we didn't make in the current fiscal year, plus we had an additional 2% reduction. So, we would tap that to cover at the end of the year, so I can balance, I balance the budget, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a question, and maybe Lita, you can answer this for us. As we see these numbers developing in terms of the enrollment for the summer, and maybe whatever you can see by way of anticipation for the fall, can you distinguish for us the reduction that we anticipate in academic versus PTE? If there's a reduction in both, and there may not be, I don't know.
I would anticipate our reduction would likely be greater in the transfer programs in the general education side of the House versus PTE. Our PTE programs, because the majority are either limited or selective enrollment programs, they have a tendency to fill and, and remain filled. So, we don't worry about the reduction there. If the classes are full, classes and programs are full, obviously, we would not even consider reduction there. So, it would be in the number of sections of particular disciplines that we would be offering that we would likely reduce. So, if we typically add, excuse me, typically offer 40 sections of English, it might be that because of this decline in enrollment, we might only offer 32 sections of English 101, if we offer, and so on and so forth. So, that's how we would be looking at, at reduction. Certainly, we look at our program enrollments over a number of years to see decline and growth in those programs, and that's how we determine viability of the programs. It rarely is based on, on a one-year enrollment.
Thank you. Judy?
That made me think then about the logistics of, if academic seems to be shrinking a bit more than professional technical do, is there, and I know, I can't be the same faculty, but does that give us a chance to expand what we have, are doing in professional technical?
Again, I think that we have to observe this over a number of years to determine how the growth actually occurs. And then, yes, there's an opportunity, I think there's always an opportunity to reallocate from one area to the other. We are, we do function under somewhat of a fixed budget that we receive from the state Professional Technical Education Office, and that is primarily what manages the professional technical education faculty salaries. I will say, however, the general fund does support professional technical education. When we get to a point where we have greater needs in professional technical education than we receive from the state, then the general fund does support professional and technical education in that way. So, yes, there's, there's a balancing act that goes on there as well.
So, what you're reminding us of is not only... So, what you're reminding us of is not only does the state funding for professional technical come up here for us, but in addition to that, we essentially underwrite some of what we do because there's such demand, exceeds what the state is sending us for money.
Yes, and I would also say that there are, there have been times when our state allocation has not covered what the institution has chosen to do with faculty salaries. And so, it has been the general fund that has helped to support, so that all faculty receive, you know, the same amount of raises, step increases, column movements, that sort of thing.
And thinking out loud with you on the continued growth we see in professional technical, and you're saying you need to look for trends to decide how to do some of those things. On the other hand, we've clearly had a signal that there's great demand for some of our professional technical programs. Is there anything more we can do with that in this coming year because of the reduction in, seemingly reduction in academic transfer programs?
Chairman Howard, as you know, we've been discussing quite a bit this past month, the six weeks, about the other limitations we have, in terms of limitations with facilities and being able to schedule those courses. So, I would say that those limiting factors prevent us from next year adding a whole another section of welding class, a whole another section of a LPN class, anything like that. So, you know, there are other limitations as well. That's why trending and planning for those, that growth is so important.
And I guess the follow-up question is, at this time, those facilities are being used as many hours a day as we can, and on weekends too, in order to be sure we're making available as much as we can?
Yes, I would say as many hours a day as possible. We have not used Saturdays in our facilities, and mostly because when we have looked at trying to do that, we have not had great interest, and we've tried to run Friday, Saturday classes and other schedules like that, and we've not had a great response in that. But certainly, offering courses as much as we can at the times that students are willing to attend those courses, yes.
Thank you.
Lita, we have a tremendous opportunity with JFAC being here. They control the purse strings, and they're under same budget constraints, and we're seeing a little bit of a lightning compared to lightning of the pressure that was on them last year. And I think that there's a lot of talk about what we do economically to bring in more funds, which is get more people back to work again. So we sit in a unique position when we have the JFAC people here in June to share our concerns about that we need more facility, and we need more funding, and we need more emphasis on this, and use that opportunity to maybe get them to recognize that we're a little bit different than what's going down in CWI and CSI, because that they have larger facilities and have been more active in the professional technical thing. So we need to be able to present a case that you give us some money, you give us some funding, and we can turn these into jobs, because we have almost as many kids that are unable to enter our professional technical courses as we do the number of people that are enrolled. So, it's a pretty significant number, and I think it would be a great opportunity for us to put some information together, make that presentation a number of times here, during the panels, which will be a lot to do about economic stimulation and things like that. So I think that we need to take advantage of that.
Thank you for that, Trustee Howard. And I would just say that maybe we, I will defer to Vice President Browning to lead us in that and guide us on how do we actually do that.
If I might, Chairman Howard and Trustee Nielsen, one of the things that we plan to tell them while we're in the Meyer Science Building, which will be one of the places that we tour, is that the funding formula for professional technical education is currently funded by program. It's not funded by numbers of students. It's, you know, you get X, that's exactly my reaction as well. And that has not substantially changed since the Eisenhower administration. We do things differently here now than we did during the first term of our current administration, let alone the Eisenhower administration. So we have to adapt. We need to adapt. The funding needs, that funding model needs to be changed, and JFAC can help us do that. So that's a point that we plan to make quite strongly, so. And we've got some ideas on how to help change that, so that it's more equitable for all the institutions. It really needs to go to an FTE base, and that's really the best way to get after it.
Am I?
Well, I want to change subjects, if she still has something on this topic.
Thank you. I'd like to drill in one more time, because it seems to me that it's the responsibility of board members and to talk to JFAC. You all as staff, it's viewed as self-serving, and I think there's a real role here, that I don't know how best to do it, and I'll work with whatever schedules and parameters they've given you. But if our community doesn't signal that to our legislators, I don't know that they'll hear the message as clearly as I believe. We who live it, as represented by elected officials, can't be beating that drum. So, I can't help but jump in on that one. Thank you.
And just to follow up to that, it's easier to say no when we're in the Capitol Building, which we saw that when we all went there. It's a lot harder when you're in front of the students, the institution, the faculty, to say no, because they're a little bit more emotionally attached, so.
Mr. Chair, on the same subject, and didn't we just recently hear that the revenues are much stronger, $164 million stronger this year, and with no commitment on what to do with that money, if anything?
We can help them.
We will help them.
We certainly are going to have suggestions on where they can put some of those excess revenues, and good places where it will return to them many times over through our economic model. But, Trustee Meyer, you're right, they see us all as self-serving, whether we're trustees or anybody associated with the college, but that's okay, because you know what? That's what we're here to do. We're here to serve the students, and we're here to serve the community. And those two go hand in hand, especially when it comes to professional technical education, because we have a proven track record there. So, we're all singing from the same hymnal on that one.
Todd, you had something?
A couple of things, actually, but I guess I'll add my two cents on that one. I guess, Mark, we'll wait to see more information from you as to where we can inject on that and appropriate targets of opportunity, and coordinate for the breakfast, I guess, and that sort of thing. Couple, three things, actually. One is, we've had a proposal for the facility site tour down at Columbia Basin College, down in the tri-cities, to look at their PTE facility. And I noticed that, and I know more, we're going to have the second reading for the RGU report and accept that their work is done. So, pay the contract, RGU is done. I guess I'm wondering, I'm going to say it out loud, should we be scheduling an opportunity to go view the Jaclyn facility, since they made their presentation to us at the third forum for that? I know I personally am not familiar with that facility, and as part of our evaluation to see if it's a viable option, should we have something scheduled up and coordinated with them, so we can look at that and see if their proposal makes sense?
Maybe. Let me answer that. Any place you want to visit, we'll try and set it up. Just let me know.
Just to me, as part of our due diligence, since we're considering all three sites equally, I think that would be appropriate. I get K-Tech, I've been there, I've walked through it and toured it, I understand the campus, I think, but I don't understand the Jaclyn facility. I've heard so much different things on that, dis and misinformation probably, so I don't know.
We'll set up a visit.
We could do that. Another item, this is to Grayden, actually. We've had a pilot program underway with our counselors, and then we kind of did initiative to incorporate some other good practices that we've seen some other colleges utilize. And so we kind of took and plus up even a little bit more our pilot program. I would be very interested, and maybe it's too premature to have any data on that, that we could look at, see what sort of improvement we may have achieved, but maybe just at least a briefing on the initiative and how we feel that we're progressing on it and what progress we've made. Something to consider, maybe.
Mr. Chairman, Trustee Ben Dootch, in fact, we had a meeting today as a follow-up of that. The results from that pilot study are just coming in, because grades were just submitted. So knowing how the students responded to some real intentional advising and processes to help them be successful are forthcoming. But in fact, the initial results show that it's been very promising, that probably over 50% of the students who were assisted through that project have had better results than what we anticipated. And we met with a large group today to roll that out to larger masses for next fall. And so I think you'll see that's been a successful pilot, and it'll be carried over to some programs that'll be initiated in the fall. And I'd be glad to give you more specifics as we get a week or two down the road.
Love to hear it, and I know a couple of the counselors that are participating, one in particular, and I'm sure she's doing a great job, so I'd love to get some feedback on that. Feel a little vested on that one, since we've all worked on that together. Exciting results though, so far, preliminary, excellent. I have one more thing I'd like to just bring up. We have a policy, it's 2.01.05. And basically, the point of it is, it's communication with the trustees, just to summarize it. And one of the things I'm concerned about, and it's been brought to my attention, that previous administrations may have tried to limit the communication with the trustees from faculty, staff, and students, for various reasons, and I won't go into that. But there's still a concern that there's a bit of a shadow over that, I guess, for lack of a better word. And I'd like to, you know, define what exactly official communication is under that policy. And then I'd like to revisit that policy, because I think we're, personally, I think we're violating their rights to communicate as taxpayers, as individuals. I'm of a mind that an instructor or faculty member, staff, student should have access to us trustees, just like any other citizen. And so I'd like to know how we can balance that, because I'm sure, you know, I mean, obviously, Mr. President, I can appreciate the fact, as a former commander, I don't want the junior airman or the student or somebody enrolling me either, you know, or unrunning their NCOs or junior officers, the chain of command. But, so I don't know what that looks like, but I have some concerns that we're choking communication a little bit unnecessarily, and I'd like to revisit that policy. I'm not sure how the appropriate way to do that is.
I would recommend that that be the topic for a board workshop.
And it would be a good topic for a board workshop, but really, there is a, an aspect of just the culture, quite frankly, I think, of what develops. And the culture, I think, that has developed under your administration has been one of open communication, and I haven't heard very much by way of restriction on that. So hopefully, a more candid, open conversation with everyone doesn't have to wait for a policy change. I would think that that's part of the culture that you have developed. Do I have that right?
Well, I don't, I don't think that there's an issue with open communication. I think that one of the intents of the policy is to make sure that there's a differentiation between a policy and operational issues, and it's my responsibility to attend to the operational issues, and the trustees' responsibilities are to develop and require implementation of those policies. And so I would speculate that the rationale for that policy being in place is to make sure that there are those defined lines.
Any other comments, questions?
Okay, how did we just answer that? I heard that, and I heard you ask, I heard that go two different ways. First, there was a workshop, then maybe not, then maybe there was a culture and how we're projecting, and how we're maybe hopefully by example, or even by statement, clarifying that things have changed under the new regime. But where do I go, where do we go with that?
I think we need to set up a workshop to deal with it, so that we can discuss it more openly and address your questions more directly.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think that would require a motion, and for the rest of the trustees to want to do a workshop on that, it'd be helpful to have some clear examples, without using names, of course. Because I haven't heard a culture of, as you describe, I feel like we're fairly open, and we have such a system in place where if someone has a concern on campus, they take it to their leadership and their chain of command, and it comes right up through the process, and eventually does get to the Board of Trustees and through the President's office. So, if there are real examples where it's, people are being stifled and the process isn't being followed, then maybe that's something we should take a look at. So maybe if you have information on that.
I can give you several, actually. And whether they're feeling stifled or not, there's certainly uncomfortableness in communicating with trustee, just my mere presence in talking to them, or them to be seen talking to me makes them nervous. One is a particular counselor, which I've, which tried to buy my deceased mother's house, and so we established, but when I showed up, it got all weird, because I wanted to talk with her and meet her, I'd never met her in person, just through the realtor. There's a counselor, Grayden can speak to this, I called her because she won an award, but it made her nervous talking to me, and even in a function upstairs, you know, to be seen talking to the trustee, you know, and then we're working on this pilot program, and I've got her communicating with people down at Walla Walla, and we're doing some things, and I'm engaged, but it made her very nervous. And then I had to incorporate some other, you know, and I can give you a couple more. So it's like, simple thing is reaching out to congratulate somebody on an achievement, and they're nervous because they're talking to a trustee. That's a, that's a culture I'd like to see overcome. And maybe that's a residual from the previous regime, you know, and I'm not saying I need Joe to stand, President Dunlap, sorry, to stand up on top of the building and with his blowhorn and go, "Okay, everybody, it's okay to talk." But, I mean, again, I can give you a couple more, but it's been very interesting to watch. Trustee walks on this campus, and it seems to me within 30 seconds, four phones have rung, and everybody gets all jumpy and nervous, because you can't talk to a trustee. And I've had people actually tell me that they're fearful of any potential repercussions for talking to us, and there's not a real understanding of what an official communication is. And a couple times, I said, "Well, I initiate." Whether I'm calling Philippe, whether I'm calling, anyway, I made my point. I think there's more to it, and maybe, maybe you're not engaging with people as often as I am right now, or maybe they're more your friends, or you're more, have a different relationship with them, but you know, I'm just a trustee trying to reach out and meet people and engage here, and I'm at a lot of events. I mean, our end penning is the only trustee, I can give you three or four incidents where I've been the only trustee at things recently, and I want to engage and be there and be part of that, but it makes people nervous, and I like to get over that somehow, or get past it.
Any other comments or questions? All right. Does that complete your report, President Dunlap?
No, Mr. Chairman, it doesn't. I have a couple, a couple announcements that I'd like to make. First of all, I'd like to recognize one of our students, and Duncan, could you stand up for just a second? Okay. Just so everybody knows who Duncan Menzies is, Duncan was selected for the Rotary Youth Leadership Award, and what that means is that there are 50 individuals that are selected throughout the Rotary District, which includes Wyoming, Idaho, Oregon, Washington, and British Columbia, that are given an opportunity to attend a leadership seminar and workshop for a week. And so Duncan was one of those 50 that was selected, and he will be going up to British Columbia to attend that leadership workshop, and so congratulations, Duncan, good job. Just a couple other quick announcements. The college has partnered with the Forest Bird Charter Academy up in Sandpoint and submitted a grant proposal to the Albertson's Foundation to establish high school career and technical programs specific to industry needs. And the specific industry need in the Sandpoint area relates to the aerospace industry. And we, with the Charter Bird Academy, are one of the finalists for that award. The grant was submitted for $5 million. North Idaho's portion of that would be $1.3 million that would support the establishment of some online, six online classes that students throughout the entire state could take, and then also hands-on workshops. The Albertson's Foundation is flying up on May 31st to visit Sandpoint and meet with industry representatives to assess the need. And in the evaluation of the proposal, the Albertson's Foundation found 10 strengths in the proposal, and there was only one weakness that they needed to address or confirm, and that was the commitment of business and industry in supporting this partnership. And so that's why they will be visiting Sandpoint, and they are bringing a team from New York as well. And so we would expect an announcement sometime shortly thereafter, and we believe we are in a very strong position with that proposal. July 10th is the drawing for the 20th annual big, really big raffle here at North Idaho College, and that raises money for scholarships, about $200,000 a year. It's a house that's built by our carpentry students. 2,500 of the 5,000 tickets have been sold, which is right on track, so I would suggest that those individuals that are interested in winning a house, or a $10,000 car, or a $5,000 boat, or other prizes, should see the foundation and buy your tickets, July 10th. It's the big day.
Chairman, I have a question on that. President Dunlap, remind me for just a moment, on the scholarships, is that money that's received, the proceeds from the raffle tickets, does that go to the foundation and dispersed from the foundation in the scholarships?
That's correct.
Is there any? Is there any portion of that that's earmarked back to the carpentry program or the PTE?
Yes, there is.
Percentage or amount, or?
Ray, you want to address that?
$50,000 of the $1,500,000 revenue is earmarked for the purchase of the land and the next year's carpentry house. So it provides a lot for the carpentry program.
Okay. But none of the scholarships or anything like that are specifically earmarked for the carpentry or PTE?
There are scholarships that are made in the carpentry school, and also a completion of their requirements to receive a skill slot and other perks when they're accepted.
That's a tangible item. Thank you.
Judy, did you have a question?
Whenever you're finished, I'll come back to a couple. I can come back when he's finished.
Okay, go ahead. She didn't want to interrupt you.
I just have one other item. And that is that we are getting ready to submit our capital budget request to the Permanent Building Fund. And we have two items that could potentially be the first priority, the second priority. And that is the collaborative education facility between U of I, LCSC, and North Idaho College, or the professional technical facility. The request is for state funding, and previously, we had asked for state funding for that collaborative building. And we had assumed that we would self-fund the professional technical facility. But we have said that the professional technical facility, as far as the campus is concerned, is the number-one priority. And so I would solicit your input in terms of how you would like to see those two items prioritized.
Mr. Chair?
Christie.
President Joe, I think you had said in the past that you'll be meeting with U of I in the near future with the president?
Yes, this week, I will be meeting with U of I, that's correct.
And so we will kind of get an idea from U of I what their commitment will be this year?
Yes.
Last year, I think they made it their number-two priority?
That's correct. They made the collaborative building number-two priority, LCSC made it number-one, and we made it number-one. This year, I believe LCSC will have that as their number-one priority, and I'll find out this week from U of I where they stand on that.
Now, I missed the discussion last year in Boise. I was unable to attend. And I'm just curious, I know that there, obviously, the funding wasn't available, but what, what was the discussion from the Permanent Building Fund Committee when they saw these three institutions coming together, sharing resources, and not duplicating resources? Was there any kind of movement, if we had the ability, we would fund that?
We made a presentation to the Permanent Building Fund Advisory Committee, and I think it was received well. However, based on the state of the state revenues, for the entire state, only $9.1 million were allocated for capital construction projects. And so while there were many worthy projects, we just did not achieve that. But as was pointed out earlier this evening, revenues are up for the state, and it may present some opportunity where they may be willing to fund up additional projects this year.
Mr. Chair, if I could just wrap up. I think I'd like to hear what U of I and LCSC are going to do this year before we make a decision on this tonight.
Right.
For clarification, is that we cannot move forward with this joint-use facility without one of the partners coming alongside. It's a, it's a joint-use facility with collaborative effort.
That's correct.
But today, our PTE students, 854 students, went without an opportunity to get the education. And so we know that's real, and that we have classes that are already filling up, that are, and we're going to have that same situation before. So when you look at as a priority, if serving our students is the number-one thing we need to do, the students of today, the students of next year, the sooner that we get this up in order, and if LCSC or any one of the other educational institutions comes up with the money, then at that point, we move that right back up. But I think for right now, to me, it's pretty clear where the priority's got to be.
Judy?
In thinking about that, and we just talked a bit ago about professional technical and the need, what has the role of the state been before in funding professional technical facilities versus, different than programs?
Yeah, to my knowledge, which is relatively new here, I don't believe that they have funded up professional technical facilities. And Grayden, can you talk about how CSI funded up their PTE facility that's relatively new?
I'm not exactly familiar, but my recollection, the one that's coming online now, came through a federal grant that they had applied for because it's associated with energy and sustainability. And there was those development grants that came out through the federal government, government they applied for, and that's providing the majority of the funding, certainly not the state.
And, and you're, you're right, and it does jog my memory. They applied for a $3 million Economic Development Administration grant and received that.
So the obvious question is, how do we get in line to make that happen?
Well, the Economic Development Administration accepts grant proposals every 90 days, and it's a very fast turnaround.
Super, 89 days.
$3 million awarded is at the very high end. Usually, it's $2 million or less. And what we need to do, if we want to get in line, is to make a proposal once we have a fixed site and fixed costs, and can lay out a plan for them. So that, that's certainly a source of funding for us.
Maybe to try and get back on track to give you an answer to your question, which was, which of those do we want to instruct the administration to put one and which one two? Was that your question?
That's correct. And this, just for clarification, this is due on the 3rd of June, and so it's coming up relatively soon. But I think clarification from U of I, as trustee Wood suggested, may help clarify the question as well.
Might I suggest that you put them both on number one?
One and one A?
One and one A? One A and B?
Yeah. And that's, that's a bit facetious, but not entirely. I'm not sure that the distinction between one and two would necessarily be that, I mean, if U of I and LCSC came in at number one, and we came in at number two, and they were willing to do it, I would not think that the fact that we placed a two would be detrimental to that. I am a little concerned, though, that we have put an awful lot of emphasis on improving our professional technical facilities.
Correct.
And any broadcast of something where we put it in a secondary spot, even though it's simply the state money that we probably won't get, if, concerns me that it will be viewed by some that we really don't have that as our priority project. And at least from, from my perspective, that is our priority project. So I'm not so sure that putting a number two, if we have to have a number two. But if we could, I don't even know, maybe we could even put some explanation in there that we really have very little distinction between them. But I'd hate to see us diminish our emphasis on professional technical needs.
Thank you for the feedback on that. And Ron and I, Ron Dorn and I'll take a look at how we do that, and I'll speak with U of I as well.
And the thought of that, the very point we're talking about is, so far, we've never seen, as best we can recollect at this moment, any funding from the state for professional technical. Doesn't mean we don't want to be in line. But what you were asking us to do is look at what we would ask the state to fund.
Yes.
Historically, we've had a better chance for the partnerships of institutions. So the idea of saying, yes, anytime there's extra money, you would think about professional technical, we want to be at the top of the list, is probably as good a way as we can communicate to the legislature with the newfound funds they seem to have, remember us.
Is, is that sufficient for your purposes?
It is, yes. And that concludes my report.
Judy?
Can't go yet, I had two more questions, sir, thank you. You mentioned that the Albertson Foundation will be up here, and you've talked about that, because I have a call tomorrow on that as well. Is there anything that our board can be doing while they're visiting up here? You're in Sandpoint, but that doesn't mean they aren't part of what our service area is.
Right. There, what I need to do is check with Cassie Silva's, because they will be stopping at Empire Airlines for a reception, and that provides some opportunity.
Foundation, too.
But then from there, they will be flying up to Sandpoint. And so that may provide some opportunity for the trustees to interact.
Yep.
And I'll get the information on that.
Thank you. And the other aspect, I don't know if you mentioned, but I thought I heard that the State Board was also coming to visit, hold meetings up here?
No.
Have I mixed up on that? Because again, anytime the State Board of Education's up here...
The State Board, from my knowledge, is not coming up here for another year.
We'll all be surprised. Okay, good, thank you. That complies my question.
That concludes my report.
And you might as well stay there, because you're next on the agenda with the second reading of the RGU report. Got Joe Dunlap next to it.
It has my name next to it?
It does.
Uh-oh.
Well, as you're aware, the RGU report has been presented, and it's been discussed quite a bit with the trustees. And the intent is to accept that report and release RGU from their responsibilities.
Judy?
The wording you're using is "accept" because it doesn't mean we've necessarily endorsed all they've said. What we've done is accept the fact that they completed what they were assigned to do.
That, that's absolutely correct. It does not imply that we even agree with the recommendations. It just means that they've completed the work that they were charged to do, and that we are accepting the report from them.
And for point of clarification as well, is that there's at least six, six business leaders, besides myself, that have read that report, and they come up with the conflicts of square footage, assumptions were made that were wrong, cost differentials between building sites, and the rating system that they used, there was just there. And as long as we make it perfectly clear, is we accept the report, we don't necessarily agree with the report, and we're done with the report. If that's what we're doing, then I'm all for that. But to use this as any type of a roadmap, I think that would be an injustice.
And, and I understand that, and this is just to accept the report. And it's up to the trustees, through their public forums and their discussions, to determine what information they would like to use, what is relevant, and then eventually make a decision based on what site is, is most acceptable. So it's just accepting that the work that they were contracted to do is completed.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept the RGU report has been completed.
Second? Second that?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nice work.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is the second reading of the Student Rec Center, and Christopher Dean is going to join us again.
Good evening, Dr. Dunlap, Mr. Chair, board, and guests, and Grayden. Tonight, we are looking at the second reading of the Student Funded Recreation Center. I would like to read specifically from tab three for some of the background and the action that we would like the board to take. During the March Board Trustees Meeting, ASNIC presented their version of a comprehensive recreation center. Substantial research has been done over the last 10 years to show that a fee of approximately $100 would sustain both the construction and an MNO budget. The board requested ASNIC representatives to prepare a statement regarding the funding and construction of a student recreation center. ASNIC met with ALSC architects to create costs and square footage estimates for this project. Updated proposals for either a fee, a freestanding, or Christian St. Genezium remodel and addition have been completed and are feasible with the original fee requested. These proposals are attached to your documents. Funding for this project would be derived from a $90 per semester fee increase that would support planning, construction, and equipment costs, along with 50% of the costs for annual operation. The balance of the, of the costs of annual operations will be derived from the revenue generation from use and activities fees. For the specific requests and the action we would like the board to take, we would request that the Board of Trustees authorize the North Hatterell College Administration to institute a fee of $90 per semester to fund the planning, construction, and operation of a student recreation center. This action also includes the authorization from the board requesting the Dormitory Housing Commission to act as the bonding authority for this project. And on a personal note, even though I am leaving, I am so appreciative of this board for supporting this rec center proposal, something that has been sought after by the student body for over a decade. Thank you.
In order to augment, I think, your request, we've had our, asked our lawyer to review the request. This is a process that we, I don't think anyone on the board right now has gone through in terms of referring things over to the Dormitory Commission. We want to make sure that we get it right. I think there's a general desire to try and support what the students want to do, but we need to get it right, and there are some implications that I think we haven't thought of before. Mark, did you want to make some comments on that?
Sure. Yeah, I'd be happy to. I think it's, it's worth noting that the Board of Trustees does have the power to impose student fees, but it's not an unlimited power. And generally, the student fees are imposed, can be imposed, for matters that are incidental to a service that's being provided. Now, what the statutes make clear is that the board cannot impose a student fee for future capital improvements of a student union or student rec center, except when it's done as a revenue source to pay the bonds that are issued by the Dormitory Housing Authority. So as I mentioned at last meeting, my concern back then was that we're putting the cart before the horse a little bit. And what I don't think the board can do right now is the board cannot impose a student fee now to collect that money to be used for a future capital acquisition. What the board can do is the board can forward the student's proposal to the Dormitory Housing Condition, or Commission, with recommendations regarding the financing, the planning, and construction. So I think that's about as far as we can go. The Dormitory Housing Commission is by law a separate, independent entity that, that has those powers, the powers to issue bonds, to do the construction, that sort of thing. The student fees can be imposed by the Board of Trustees in that context, but as part of what is going to be the revenue source, revenue stream, to service that debt. So I think that's, that's kind of, I hope that explains the limitations and the authority that this board has at this point.
So are there, any questions or comments, Judy?
Although it's called Dormitory Housing Commission, a student rec center fits within their domain of authority and so on.
Absolutely, yes.
So wouldn't the logic be then for us to keep this moving by at least saying as a board, let's get it off to the Dormitory Housing Commission so they can come back to us, then with the verification that we can go ahead and begin that charging of the fee process? Is that the right sequence?
Yeah, indeed, I think the statute anticipates us considering it and then recommending it to the Dormitory Housing Commission, and then they act on it. And they will act on it and probably actually refer it back to us to follow through on it, right? But I, they, they're looking for some recommendation, the Dormitory Housing Commission, looking for some recommendation from us as to whether or not this is a facility that we would endorse. And so I think we need to send that message to them to keep this, this action moving along. But we can't include in that the taxing of, at this time, until there's an actual bond issue that needs to be satisfied.
Mr. Chair, I think for, and I'm only speaking for one board member, certainly, I'm in support of the rec center, and I think most of the board, as you said, would like to see this happen. But it's such a huge project that we need to try to understand. And so I'd like to propose that we do set aside a workshop specifically for this project very soon, within the next two weeks, where we get maybe to talk to the architect, and we get the nuts and bolts of everything, and we make a decision at that workshop to move forward or not move forward, and get, and launch this thing or not launch it. But there's just so many moving parts that we need to understand, rather than just, just looking at, we need to talk about it. Does that make sense? Help us understand, is what I'm getting at. So I, my motion is for a board workshop specifically, within the next two weeks, if schedules allow, to discuss the student recreation center.
Is there a second for the motion?
Second the motion?
Okay, now we can have a discussion on it. Did you have a comment?
Yes, sir. Christie, I'm in support of your workshop, but I would maybe question the timeline, and let me explain why. Even as we look at our tab here, we're looking at two different options. One is a new facility, new site, and then one, as we break it out, talks about addressing, you know, the rehabilitation... you know, the rehabilitation in addition to Christensen Gymnasium. May I suggest that, at a minimum, maybe we could put something forth to the Dormitory Commission that says, yeah, we'd like to support this and let the kids go forward and do it, and I say "kids," all students. But the reality is, until we resolve this facility that we're looking at to potentially build this new athletic event center, with really a September timeline, I think, because of the option on the property at Riverstone and how we're engaged on this, we've got a fairly hard timeline because we're looking for the recommendation to the board by the August board meeting from the ad hoc committee, based on the four subcommittees and the work that we're doing. And I hate to do this to you, Christopher, but maybe we get the Dormitory Commission at least on board to, hey, we want to do something, and we intend to, or hope to, or want to. But really, I don't know that we can go very far until we realize what's on or off the table. Either it's going to be Christensen or it's not. And I think by September, we're going to know that because we're waiting for that recommendation at the August board meeting. Is there any way we could buy you guys off for a few months until we get there somehow? I mean, you see my concern. I'm all for the workshop, but right now, until I hear that recommendation at the August board meeting, I don't know if we're going to try to proceed with an event center at some location or not. I mean, you know, we just don't know where we're at on that. So if I start making plans, which direction do I go at this point?
Any other comments?
I think that, Todd, I agree with what you're saying, but I think that, as Christie says, is we have probably, after some of this data we saw in Mr. Grayden for the first time, and when you see the number, the size of the number, it wasn't as shocking as the tree, its relationship to the price. But there were some questions there about why it would cost more to refurbish an existing building versus building a new building and that type of stuff. So I guess I would love to have that opportunity, and as Michelle said when she spoke, is that when they told you it was eight hours a month to be on this board, what's another four hours on top of the 30 that we did so far? So I'm all in to set aside a two or three hour window, have the student body and the architects and them come in and get us a real feel. So we now are better armed to be able to go defend Christopher's mission, which is to make this happen, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, first of all, I'd like for you to note that we have some guests in the audience that represent this, from ALSC architects, Ruston Hall and Steve Roth and Debbie Bravo are back in the audience, and they've been so fabulous to work with on a very short timeline, you might note, that they've been with us and put together the proposals that were in front of you tonight. And so they squeezed a lot of information in a short period of time. But in fact, we really consider them to be at least the regional experts, because if you would look around at the sports and recreation facilities in Spokane and Cord Lane, they've been involved in the design and construction of nearly every one of those, so they have an outstanding track record. I'm certain to your question, Trustee Nielsen, relative to the difference in cost, they could address that real quickly between the remodel and the freestanding building. So I know they would be glad to participate in that workshop as well and provide you with that information. My greatest concern about the discussion tonight relative to this is, as President Dean noted, this request has been in front of the board, and I know not all of you have been a part of that process for over 10 years, and I know you want to be thoughtful in its consideration, but I think it's a request that keeps coming forward. And my concern for timing all along has been this, that if we go to and we anticipate going to the Dormitory Housing Commission, and in fact, that they would be supportive of the project. And then as they go out for bonding, part of what they have to have is proof of a revenue stream. And I'm not certain that if we get to that in September, October, November, that the only time that we could really implement a fee that they could base repayment of the bond on would be for next fall. And so then, once again, we've delayed this project for another year. It moves beyond President Dean. It probably moves beyond President Cheever's. And we've continued with this process all along. I believe the board has expressed their support for this project, so understand the need for more information. But at the same time, I think we, and I'm speaking on behalf of the students, really need to know that the board's committed to this project. We're going to move forward with as much haste and wisdom as we can, and we're committed to making this happen. On behalf of the students, who in fact are paying for the facility with their fees, not with the taxpayers, not with other people, but with the tuition and fees that they provide to support this project, I think it's really important that we send that message strongly back to the students.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I call for the question, and if we can make it within a week, so I call for the question.
On the motion that you just made?
Yes.
Which we'll have repeated, please.
That we have a board workshop within the next two weeks and invite the architects to go through this proposal.
What if it doesn't happen within two weeks?
We do it as soon as possible. Our schedule's permitting within the next two weeks.
Okay, the question's been called on the motion, and does everybody understand the motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. So we're going to set up a workshop as soon as possible, hopefully within the next two weeks. We will address this and we'll invite, and you might think about inviting, anyone who would be helpful in helping us understand the scope of this project, the cost, some of the questions that have been raised, so that we can deal with it at that time. And this is a workshop, so that won't be something we'll be making a decision at the workshop. It would be made at another duly constituted meeting, so.
It's a public workshop.
It is a public, everybody can attend. We just won't be taking an action on it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I could consult with Mr. Lyon, are we able to set an agenda and take action?
In a workshop?
Well, it would be a special meeting, and yes, if it's properly noticed with an agenda, then you can put an action item on the agenda.
That would make more sense if we're looking for a timely decision.
Who's going to author?
Judy?
I don't want to lose track, because don't we still need to come back to the Dormitory Housing Commission issue? So there's a couple of parallel projects here, and so I was ready to make a motion on that if this is the time.
Well, hang on. Todd, did you have something?
Well, I was going to ask, who would be the, who would be authoring that action item for the agenda that we'd be creating? Do you know what that looked like?
Administration.
The reason I'm wondering is because you're about to make a motion, so is the action item to send this to the housing, the Dormitory Commission?
I think we need to remember, this is a murky process at best, but we are not going to make a decision here about whether they go forward with the recreation unit or not. What we simply do is make a recommendation to the Housing Commission to look into it and see if they would proceed with it. And if they do, then they'll make a contract, they don't have the staff or ability to do anything, they will make a contract probably back with us in order to look into the cost, the extent of the process, you know, what kind of a building, what it's going to look like, what the design's going to look like, and that sort of thing. So that's the only reason I voted against the motion, was I think that, you know, what we're doing now is fairly general. Do we think that the request of a rec center of the magnitude that they're talking about is reasonable to refer on to the Dormitory Housing Commission for their review and examination and endorsement or rejection? So that's the next step. No matter what we do here, after we go through our meetings and everything else, we're just simply going to refer it on to the Dormitory Housing Commission. Yes, Christie?
Mr. Chair, thank you. I don't think anyone has a concern with moving it on to the commission, but it could be placed on campus, on our property, and so we're just trying to understand the scope of the project. And that's why I think it'd be helpful for us to have the workshop. I have no concerns about moving forward with the commission.
Well, we've got a motion that's been passed. Pardon?
Sorry, I was so excited to make my motion now.
Go ahead. You have a motion to make.
Which was that the Board of Trustees of North Idaho College send on the request to the Dormitory Housing Commission. We endorse the student request. How am I doing on wording here?
I'm enjoying it so far.
For the Dormitory Housing Commission to, what, act on? What do we want the Dormitory Housing Commission to do?
Well, I think the...
We changed the wording here.
Act as the bonding authority for this project. Just reading the bottom.
Starting over on the mission, on the motion here, poor Shannon, that the board requests the Dormitory Housing Commission to act as the bonding authority for the project. I'm done.
Second?
Yeah, I think they need, I think they need to approve the development of the recreation facility and act as a bonding authority.
That must have been what my motion was going to say.
So we know what we're trying to do.
Mark, have we done the wording right?
But keep in mind, the Dormitory Housing Commission is a separate, independent legal entity, and they have the power, the authority vested by statute, to go forward with construct, make the decision on construction, and issue bonds, and go forward. I don't, this board cannot force them to do that. So the best you can do at this point is you can pass along the student's request for the proposal that they've made, with your recommendation that the Dormitory Housing Authority go forward with that request. Now, keep in mind, I mean, that should probably be the extent of your motion, but keep in mind that the Dormitory Housing Commission, before they go forward, if it's going to happen on campus with NIC property, the commission is going to have to get an agreement because they're going to be constrained by what we do have authority over, and that's, they can't go forward and construct on our property unless we agree to it. So it does come back to us, but I think first they have to make the decision that they are going to go forward with the financing.
We construct our property and...
First step.
So if you want, if you want the motion, the motion I think that would work is, I think what I stated, is that the board is going to pass the student's proposal on to the Dormitory Housing Commission with its recommendation.
That's exactly what I was going to say.
Let me read what I have as a motion, sort of developed from your conversation. The motion that the board requests that the Housing Commission...
Dormitory Housing Commission.
Move forward with the student's request. The board requests and recommends to the Housing Commission, right, that it move forward with the student's request for a recreation center.
That was Judy's motion, and I second that.
Any discussion on that motion?
Mr. Chair, make sure, as part of that request, is there a discussion that will take place on behalf of the Housing Commission, their responsibility to make sure this ongoing revenue source would cover MNO for this facility? So at this point, note in the records that Mr. Stanley is doing this, okay? So there is no commitment, as you stated in here, from the educational institution or from the taxpayers for this. This is fully student burden, and if they can't, they've come back with a maintenance and operation budget that now puts it out of reach at that point, that we're all done.
And, Mr. Chairman, and Trustee Nielsen, I'm glad you brought that up, because in fact, part of the MNO request is included in the fee recommendation. The other part is part of a business plan that's being developed to generate the revenue to provide for the rest of the operation. So in fact, we're committed to making sure that doesn't cost taxpayers, but anybody but the users and the students who have authorized it.
Any other discussion on the motion? Do you all understand the motion? Do you want it read again? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Fouls don't count.
Duly noted. I was still processing the whole motion and what we just agreed to endorse or not, and I'm not sure if I just said I'm approving of 8.2 or 9.2 million, or if that due diligence is being done by the Dormitory Commission or what.
I think we need to leave it to the Dormitory Commission and do what they're supposed to do, and then refer it back to us if they accept the concept in the process and are willing to go after the bonding for it.
Chairman Howard, if I may, having been through this process before, in fact, I think what you'll see is a recommendation that will come back directly, not from the students, but from Dormitory Housing Commission, with a suggestion from them for board action.
That will include, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
That will also include Mr. Stanley, all of the costs associated with the construction, the plant machinery and equipment, as well as the ongoing MNO budget, showing that a zero balance on responsibility to the taxpayers.
Correct. That's absolutely right. The project costs that are noted in here are inclusive of all the equipment, which, as you might know, would be real substantial for a rec center. It's approximately $750,000, but that's included in the initial proposals that are in front of you. We'll be certain that all those costs are included and will not impact our taxpayers.
Now, I have a question of the board. Since we just passed a motion that refers us on to the Housing Commission, why is there a timing problem in terms of any workshop for us? I mean, why put us in a position of having a short-term time in which to have a workshop on this if we've already referred it on? I mean, it's worthwhile still to hear about it, but...
I can answer that since I made the motion. I'm not certain how soon they will come back to us, and I'd like us to have a level of preparation, to understand the scope of the project, because once again, we could find ourselves in a position of, well, here we are to talk about it, and we haven't had our workshop. So if two weeks doesn't work, I mean, my motion I could amend, but I'd like it to be fairly soon.
Okay. Ron?
My comment would be, is if Mr. Stanley is smiling, that means that he's got some skids greased in the Housing Commission, so I would prefer to be in front of this well enough, educated enough, and have the heated debate and discussions, and have the opportunity to sit down with the architectural firm and get a clear clarification of what this is going to look like. And so, Mr. Chairman, I would like that opportunity sooner than later.
All right. We have the two motions that have passed, so is there anything further?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, the next item on the agenda is the second reading for a number of budget items. The way these are listed in our agenda, I'm looking at them, trying to make some kind of reasonable, logical sequence in which to address them so that we can get all the pieces put together properly. Tab seven, and actually, we have a new packet of information that was just given to us that includes all of the tabs. It was laying on your desk. It should be right there someplace.
We don't have any, Mr. Chairman.
Ron?
Not yet.
That must be a stealth packet.
So it's different from what you're...
Thank you for the recording. Nice tie.
Yeah, let me explain in a minute.
Okay. Oh, I, okay.
Does Todd have his?
I don't have...
I don't, I don't see him.
Yeah.
No.
You threw your stuff, Liam.
I don't think I lost it.
Thank you.
Let me explain what this is. Before we started this evening, I was looking through what had been presented to us for our passing the budget, and it was different than what we had when we had the first reading. And it was different only in the order of things, not necessarily in the content. And then, tab seven was a total institutional budget, and we didn't have that in the first reading. So I asked them to go back and get us the information that was presented to us in the first reading, and that's what just been passed out to you. This is the information that we got during the first reading.
So, Mr. Chair, then are all the pages different, or just one or two of them? Because my notes from one set, I don't know how much of mine need to transfer to this.
I'm not able to answer that question. Ron, can you answer that?
I do not know how many of the pages are different, but I suggest we look at what I handed out, because it is what you received the last time, and what we did and what we sent out to you, we included the recommendation for a $5 per credit hour increase, the salary column movement, and the implementation of a $3 fee per semester that the student government talked about before. We're in the new recommendation, so they would have affected any of the pages that dealt with the tuition and fees, and the final page, which dealt with the total revenue of the institution.
So that was tab six in last month's. Does anybody have last month's?
This is all tab two, right? Mr. Chair, what was handed out is only tab two contents, right?
No, what was handed out is what you... No, what was handed out is what you...
What hand? What was handed out is tabs two through seven, which were the tabs that I presented at the April...
I got you.
Twenty-third board meeting. It's, it's the same thing that I, that I did at the April board meeting, and, again, it's a suggestion of the board chair. It's out there, so that at least I can ask the board at this point in time, on a second reading, to approve tabs two through seven of the college's proposed fiscal year 14 budget, as presented to you at the April 22nd or 23rd meeting.
Mr. Chair, if I may. Judy, for clarification, when you look at the current book, tab two is fiscal year 14 tuition and fees. If you're looking at the April book, tab six was fiscal year 14 tuition and fees. So, the tab numbers don't align from April to May.
Tabs are not going to be the same, so we can't go back and forth. We have to consider what we handed out, which is the request that been made to go back to what I presented to you in April.
So, with everybody being probably confused at this point.
Yep. Let's try it.
What I, what I would hope to do is to go through it in the same way we went through it before. There was a base budget that was presented, and then there were some specific requests, where there's specific budget for service unit budgets, for the fee-based activities. There's a general fund operating budget. There was also a President's Council recommendation.
Yes, there were, there were recommendations from President's Cabinet and the student recommendations. So, the packet that Ron handed out is exactly what was handed out last month to establish the base budget, and the intent tonight is to go over, is, is to hopefully approve the base budget and then look at the recommendations that had come forward separately, and for, so for discussion and either modification or approval.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay, let me make, President Dunlap, let me make sure I'm clear on this, because when I'm looking at the April, and I'm looking at this page, and I'm looking at, I'll use, for example, bottom right-hand corner, I see the 25.93 percent. Look at the handout I just got, and this is 24.93 percent, as I'm looking at everything, I was using one reference point. Now, look at what I just got in the May book, in that same table on the bottom right-hand side, I'm seeing 26.92. So, it looks to me like it's the same information, same columns, same, coming both directions, but yet it looks like we've, some of the numbers have been adjusted. Is that correct, Ron? Is that what I'm seeing? Like, in the upper right, instead of 0 percent, I now see 4.16. So, we've filled this grid in.
The May's would have been adjusted from the April, because we didn't have those requests built into the forms that we handed out to you, yes.
Okay. Makes sense to me, then. Okay.
The April, the April handout included no tuition increase and no increases in taxes, but it did include the closing of the tuition window and the revenue portion of this. That's what was included in the April, the April, the first reading. That's what you saw in the first reading. No tuition increases, no tax increases, but a closing of the window.
And once again, explain this closing of the window, Ron.
Charging after 12 credits. Now, was the thing I had...
Charging between 12 and 16 credits, which we now do not do, saying that we would charge for every credit taken.
Ron, if I'm, correct me if I'm mistaken, but tab seven in our board packet has the total institutional budget with all of the recommendations from the President's Council, correct? With the exception of what?
The...
Should have been tab 11.
The, the packet that I handed out, is that what you're talking, are you talking about the board?
Tab seven of the material we got with our Friday.
That includes all the information that you received in April, plus the recommendation for a $5 per credit hour increase in tuition that would generate about 600, well, $600,000. It would go into an equipment, an academic and, academic, academic and general equipment reserve.
So, Ron, that was tab 11, and that's why it went from 59, 234, 475 to the 59, 859, 475.
Yes. And also would include the 22,000 for the column movement that we felt that we, that we had to, that we had to honor relative, and that was for the degrees of faculty getting it, its column movement. So, those are the, those are the two changes that appear in the information that you received from what you received in April. Those, those are the two changes there.
I guess I want to get this to a point where we can start to discuss it and know what we're, we're discussing. If we look at tab seven of the material that was handed out last Friday, do you have that in front of you?
In the board book. That's in the board book.
In the board book, right.
Yep.
That contains the total institution budget with, at least in general terms. If we, if we were to make a motion to approve this budget, all right, that would include everything, including the President's Council recommendations, right?
Yes.
And then, we could, to the extent that we, we think we need to add or subtract to that.
Yes.
Does everybody understand that?
I do.
So, I need a, I need a motion if you want to start there. If you want to start with this budget, which is tab seven, which is general budget, so we can at least have a basis upon which to have a discussion.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, sir. Okay, let me understand what you just said. So, if we do a motion, second it, we take this number, and then from there, we can make adjustments to it, or at least make motions to make adjustments, whether we pass those motions or not.
Yes. We have something on the table that's seconded in order to be able to have a, a discussion on it, and then you can make amendments to the motion that's pending.
Okay.
Now, I guess what I fear about going forward now is there's so much confusion with all the paperwork, that we're not going to get everybody looking at the same papers and understanding what's going on. And I want some indication from the board as to how we ought to proceed. If you feel that this is too confusing, and we're not going to be able to do it, then we ought to say that. But otherwise, I think the best way to move forward is to have as a starting point, the recommendation from the administration, and then we work from there in terms of amendments, either adding or detracting from it, subtracting from it. Did you have a question, Judy?
I'm just thinking with you, too. The last thing we need to do is be confused about this, and so, the concept of looking at the budget with different segments of it that we look at is, is important to me. To do that now, I have labeled, the packet that was handed out to us now reflects what happened in April, even though it says May. And in my board book, my packet, tab seven, that says May, had everything in it. So, when we talk about tab seven, I need to label it tab seven as of the April numbers?
The board packet. The board packet that we see Friday, last Friday.
So, the difference, Judy?
Oh, right. I see it here. Which one are we working off of?
Well, the chairman's proposal is that somebody make a motion...
Right.
...to accept the proposed budget, and then we would, if there's a second, we would have discussion. And, Mr. Chair, my only concern with that is, how do we go? We're going to be bouncing all over the place and not going layer through layer, as like we did last month, where we started with tuition and we went through everything, if we do it that way.
I'm, I'm open to suggestions. I'm, I'm trying to formulate a way that we can move forward on this budget. I think it's important to try and get through it this evening, but I also don't want to do it in a way that the, the board is confused and, and later on looks at it and says, I, I didn't want to do that.
Whoops.
So, I'm asking for, I'm, I'm offering that as a path forward, but if it's not acceptable, let's find something else.
Yeah, because, Ron, when you go to tab seven on the one that was handed to us as our board packet, and then tab seven you handed us, there's a, a change in general, I mean, tuition and fee revenue from, from 14, 7 to 15, 3. Where, where did that change come from? Because according to this, it's adjusted down from what the, the previous tab said. So, what is that, what is that, what's that $600,000 change?
In the tab seven that you received last Friday...
The board packet.
Board packet.
Yep.
Includes the $5 proposal for credit hour tuition increase that's up there, or was up there. It includes 22,000 to fund the level salary column movement, and I believe it has a $3 fee per semester to support the 10 new clubs in it, the fee increase. Those are the, those are the three revenue changes from what we were talking about in April.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd make a suggestion that we set tab seven from our board packet aside. If we're going to use what was presented in April, we start there and, start at the beginning, and use the number that was presented in April, and then we add to it if we choose to do so. Because tab seven in our board packet has made an assumption that all of us are agreeable to the $5. Some of us may want to see that higher, some may want to see it at all. So, to just make a motion to accept this budget, I understand you're looking for just discussion, but I don't know how we'll dig down into the layers if we do that.
And maybe what we're learning from this is, on the material you gave to us in our board packet, maybe next time we could list the things, the changes that you made in it, because now what I'm doing is writing down on what was in our board packet, the things that we're doing. So, Kristy, you're saying, let go of that, come back to, what was the April one, was handed out to us now?
First reading.
First reading one, okay. Then we need to talk about the topics that get put into it, and we decide what we put in and what we don't. I could, I think I can stay with you that far. How you doing, Ron? We're back to here.
I, I think we need unanimity on the board as to how we move forward on this. I don't want somebody to be, feel like they don't, they can't grasp this now, given the short timeframe in which we've had to compare some of these figures. So, I'd like to hear from everybody about how we move forward. Is everybody comfortable with moving forward with the information that was presented to us on first reading and using that as a base?
Well, I guess my question would be, we had the workshop on the 13th, and we went through a number of these topics, so I guess the question would be, Ron, would it be simpler for you just to, to highlight these changes and walk us through these? I mean, the tabs don't align, but you can go just back and forth. I mean, they're in the same order. They just start on a different number and then sequence through. One ends at 11 and one ends at 7, depending on which packet you're looking at.
Where we are now, if we go back to the April, what you've seen at the workshop and what you approved on the first reading, would be a lot easier to make the three additions that, that we, that the administration is requesting the changes to be made to that budget. I think it would be a lot easier to do, to do it that way, because you all pretty much have a really good understanding of what we did at the workshop and what we presented in April, which is this, this paper packet you have, and I think we should start, I think we should start from there, because I think you all have a really good understanding of that. And then we can talk about the additions that the administration is recommending.
Does everybody have their notes?
That would clear up.
No, I mean from the workshop. I have my notes from the workshop, if you want to walk through that in.
So, I think we could walk through, based on, again, what we did at the workshop and the first reading, the three, the four, the three or four items that the administration would like to add to that budget that we presented to you on the first reading, I think that would be a lot easier to do and a lot, a lot simpler.
Is everybody comfortable with our approach, using the packet that was just passed out?
The first reading, yes.
First reading packet.
And that packet has tuition fees starting at 14,747.
Is that tab seven?
And the general fund, just for some number to...
Yes.
...tell me where I am.
It's tab seven attachment A.
Yep.
Of April.
Yep.
May 22nd.
It says May, but it should be April. It has, yeah. The tuition fees are 14,747, 378, and these were the figures that we worked off of in the workshop, and this is what I presented to you on the first reading in April.
Ron, I'm sorry. Did we, are we looking at the April book or out of the May book? Would we decide to just do...
You can look out of the, I think we're going to go with the April. I think that's what everybody's agreed to do, and either, Todd, you can look at the April book, or you can look at the handout, which is the same, should be the same thing.
Okay, because that should start in tab six, then, with the tuition fees of the April book. Okay.
Clarification, Ron. What I understand is that this updated tab reflects these three changes, or, which is a $5 fee.
Column.
It's the $5 per credit hour fee, the column increase, and the $3 fee per semester for the students to deal with attending the clubs. That should be the, that's what the difference is between the April and the May, if we take it in total. That are the, those are the only differences between what we did in the first reading and what we, we're going to present to you as a second reading. Those, those are the three items. Those are the only differences in this, in, in the two reports.
Now, Ron, we discussed the meet and confer recommendations. Where do those be? Where are those represented?
They are not, they are not in here. The administration's proposal is just for those items there to be included in the budget. It has nothing to, we are not recommending business step and column.
Again, just so we got a procedure that we can move forward on, is everybody in agreement that we move forward with the, using the information that was provided on first reading, and then let Ron deal with any additions that they've made to it? Are we comfortable with that?
Yes, sir.
Everybody?
Yeah.
Okay, then let's go forward, then, using that as a base, Ron.
Presenting within the crowd. Yeah, some, some of us would like to thin that out, too, I think. Well, what you have in front of you that was handed out to you tonight is the copy of the information I presented in April for the first reading on tabs two through seven that did not include a tuition increase, did not include a tax increase, but included revenue from closing the window. And, and that was, that was the first reading. It included nothing that was up here, so that's the starting point right now. So, if I were to, that's the base by which we're starting. That's what's been through the first reading, is that information.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Is this appropriate time to have discussion on the first portion of that budget, which would have been tuition?
Well, yeah, we need a motion on the table, so we know what we're discussing, and probably, I would suggest that we use the base budget, which is, I think, tab seven attachment A, which is the total institution budget, and that we have a motion to accept it in a second. That, then we can have a discussion on that, which includes all the elements in there.
I thought we just went all through that, that we were going to use our first reading.
That's, that's the one I'm talking about.
Oh, okay.
I have a motion, but I guess you're looking for a motion, okay.
Yeah. Need a motion to adopt the...
I will make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
And we need a second.
Oh, second.
Now, let's, we can discuss the budget that is, that's proposed, and we can go through it. If you want to go, have some specific part of it, then identify it, and we'll discuss it.
But before you do, we want, Ron and I want to be sure that we're not whispering and not hearing right what's happening, which is, when you use the word "closing the window", that refers to...
Charging for every credit that a student takes.
In other words, that 13th, 14th, 15th, 16th?
12 through 16, currently, we do not charge for. We're proposing that we charge for those credits.
So, rather than close the window...
To cover our cost of... Yes.
So, I think it would be easier for Ron, if you could just say, is the difference between these is 625,000. If you could break down, saying, this tuition increase of $5 equals this amount of money, the student fee equals this amount of money, and closing the window is this amount of money, and then we easily can come to an understanding.
The closing of the window, as was presented in the first reading, generates approximately $1.2 million in additional revenue for the college.
Which is the... Which is the tuition?
Which is tuition.
Comes from $5 times whatever.
No, no, that.
Oop.
We're closing the window where we're going to charge for each credit produced, the 12 through 16. By doing that, we estimate that we would generate an additional $1.2 million in tuition revenue. In addition to that, the Administration is recommending a $5 per credit hour increase in tuition, which would generate approximately $600,000, which would be used for, to develop an equipment replacement schedule for instructional equipment and other equipment yet to be defined by the Administration, much as we have the IT fund. Also to increase the expenditure base by $22,000 to include the column movements for faculty. That's the second part of the Administration's recommendation. And the third part is to accept a student's recommendation to increase the student fee by an additional $3 to fund the 10 new clubs and their leadership development. Sarah, how much is that? Do you know how much that?
They're estimating it's about $25,000 and it's $3 per FTE.
I'm sorry, $3 per FTE. For that fee, that would generate about $25,000.
That's the list we need next time.
So those would be the changes that the Administration has proposed in the budget from the first reading, all but the $1.2 million which is in the first reading. So the $1.2 million is in the first reading already. When we, when you read that, when you, when you went through that, that included closing the windows, as I've stated before. The three new amounts that have been added since then are the $600,000 generated by the $5 per credit hour increase, the $22,000 for the column movement, and the $3 fee per FTE, which generates about $25,000. That is the only new revenue, new revenue or expenditures requested from the President's Cabinet since the first reading.
Mr. Chair? May I?
Yes.
Ron, some other information we had last time in our Packet was supplemental revenue information. And part of what I'd like to talk to the Board about tonight is, the proposal last, at the last meeting, was anywhere that you basically laid out a $5 per credit increase in tuition would generate $600,000. And the Board was given an idea of how we could use that money for equipment. But you also said a $10 per credit increase in tuition would generate 1.2 million of new revenue. So we had a window there between $5 and $10 for revenue. Correct?
Yes, we talked about the $5 per credit and also an additional $5 per credit, what that would generate, yeah.
Okay, so that was all on the table and we haven't made any decisions about that. So we could certainly increase this budget if we chose to. So I would like to talk to the Board tonight about the step increases. I've given this a tremendous amount of thought. The proposal from the President's Cabinet is to freeze the step. And I want us to have some very thoughtful discussion about that. Step and grade is very, very different from a COLA, cost of living, increase. COLA is something I think that is very negotiable. The college looks at what they can afford to do based on what the cost of living is to the employees. And we negotiate that and we do the best we can every year. This step and column movement is very, very different. Two years ago, this Board was very diligent in trying to put together a salary schedule. And that schedule was designed to assure that when we brought employees on, that they would have a starting point and an ending point. And we would do our best to always keep them at market. And so now, two years into this, there's actually a proposal that we freeze a step. And I do not see us as being in any kind of a budget crisis at this moment. I can point out other areas of revenue, but I don't see we're in a crisis. We certainly have a lot of challenges ahead. We're probably going to have to fund our own buildings. Therefore, you see us put aside about $2.6 million a year into our capital investment reserve fund, trying to do that, hopeful that the state will find some money down the road. But we have other funds too that we focus on. That's why I asked the question earlier about the contingency enrollment plan, if there is a problem with enrollment. We have also funded for that. So the step, the step in salary was a commitment that this Board made. And it went all the way down to the lowest level of the salary, which may include some of our maintenance and grounds workers, where we said, "You will make a livable wage if you work for North Idaho College. That is our commitment to you." And so, two years down the road, we look at getting off track. And for that lowest level of person that may be at $11 or something an hour, that step increase is maybe 25, 28 cents an hour. Upper end, it's going to be certainly higher. But if you look at some of the data that's been given to us about where our faculty and staff are, you heard in the last presentation that we're in the upper third. But when you really look at it, not everyone's in the upper third. In fact, there are many that haven't even made it to mid-range. And our salary schedule was not designed just to get to the mid-range and you stop. You stick with us for your career. We have told you by adopting the schedule, you'll get to the end. And then at the end, you won't go any further, you'll get cost of living, hopefully. And so that was what we designed it for. I can't imagine why we'd abandon it. Our obligation every year is determine how we're going to fund staff and faculty wages. That's just part of our ongoing general budget obligation. And so it's really, like I said, the COLA is very different. So next year, we're going to have to look at it the same way. How do we fund this out of our general budget? So my proposal for tonight, since we have not identified it in any other way, we're not considering any kind of tax increases, which is wholly appropriate. I do think we're still within a reasonable window of tuition, where we will be one of the lowest in the state. So my proposal to this Board and my motion is that we move forward with the $10 in addition to tuition. That would fund the complete step increase for faculty and staff and the column movement. Any additional funds that would come from that $5, we could also designate, if we wanted to, to the study that we're going to have to pay for with the City of Coeur d'Alene. That'd be about $100,000. And so my motion is that we honor those agreements we made two years ago and we stick with the salary schedule. We do not freeze the steps.
Is there a second?
Can I get a clarification here on what the motion is? I try to keep track of these as best I can. As I have that, this is a motion to amend the original motion to increase tuition to $10 to fund step increases. Is it, is there more to it than that?
No, that's it.
That's correct.
$5 is to, to fund the step increases and $5 is to go into the facilities fund. Probably more accurately.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, do we have a second to that motion?
Myers, second it.
Okay, now we can have a discussion on the motion.
Discussion? Ron, make sure, at our last meeting, we talked about the step increase. And you heard Christie Wood say that we went from the third, the third of the bottom to the top third over this period of time, in which I believe has been 12 years. Is that, is that approximate? I thought it was like 202 to till now. So 10 or 11 years that we've been through this process. And I ask you, did we fund this step? And you said, no, and we did in this year, we didn't in this year, we skipped this year, we did this year. And doing this, which I think that there was like four or five step increases during that tenure. Do you have that information that you had last night?
Those were the faculty steps. And I don't know if Laura, if you have that information with you, you want to? And we did go over about a seven-year period of time. And there were a certain number of years that it wasn't funded and other years where the Board made up for that. And it, where we are currently on the mountain state schedule, it didn't seem to impact that greatly by not having that each year. But we did not do staff step increases, only came in two years ago.
Staff step increase.
Staff step increase. Faculty have been in, faculty have been in there, yeah.
Motion for everybody?
What was your, what was your question?
Yeah, my question was, is take us back through that process so that we can know when these step increases were passed by the Board and were they denied by the Boards? Because we know today that we've made tremendous ground if we went from the bottom third to the top third.
What she's going to give you are just the faculty. Because again, historically, until last year, staff have not had step increases in place. Those were new schedules. So what Laura will give you are the faculty, what happened with the faculty.
And I'm just, this is just faculty, whereas the motion is for everybody.
Well, what Ron wants is the history though. And the only, the history he went over is the faculty history, because that's all that was available to us at the time.
That's right.
That's the difference, okay.
Okay, fiscal year 2002, there was a step increase given. Fiscal year 2003, there was no step. 2004, there was no step. In 2005, they were given a 7% increase. And a new schedule was adopted, which added a step zero, making each step one step higher in the range. Fiscal year 2006, a step increase was given. 2007, no step increase, but a 1.263% increase to the base. Fiscal year 2008...
Explain that, 1.23 to the base meaning?
My understanding of that is the whole range moves 1.263%.
Mr. Chair, for clarification, that's a COLA, that's not a step.
Yeah, it's a COLA.
Well, sometimes that can be to keep, that's a market shift too. If you, if you do a salary survey and you look at the market data for those professional positions, you have to move the scales up to stay with market. So it could be a COLA or it could be a market shift.
Well, we were on the Board. I remember it as a COLA.
Could you finish that? We, we got up to 2008.
Fiscal year 2008, a step increase was given. 2009, a step increase was given. 2010, there was no step. 2011, a step increase was given. 2012, a step increase was given. 2013, a step plus a 2% increase to the base. And 2014, we're still waiting to hear.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm already on record as, I don't like the fact that we're charging for the credits at 13, 14, and 15, and 16. And...
Todd, I'm sorry, I wanted to hear you.
I said, I'm on record already as not being in favor of charging for the additional credits, the 13th, 14th, 15th, and 16th credit. And now we're, we've got the $3 per semester fee, we've got the $5 per credit fee, plus we're closing the... How much more do we put on the students? We went through this at the Budget Workshop and then we asked the question, where do we go back? And that's who Lauren was asked and we all, I thought, walked through this whole step thing at that time. And I thought there was an agreement, a consensus, that this would be a year appropriate to not have that and not put any more burden on the students. You know, Ron had asked the question, how far can we go and stretch and charge the students? And then the converse question that became is, how much can we hold off at this time with staff and faculty to try to balance that? And not always just be squeezing on the students. Again, I submit to you, I think we've, we're squeezing as much or more out of the students than we should be. And I'd still like to even, I don't even like to charge on the, on the additional credits. So I have to say, I'm definitely not in favor of raising that from 5 to 10. If we went to 10, to be honest, for me, it'd be so that we're not charging for the 13th, 14th, 15th, and 16th credit. So yeah, charge the 10 bucks for that. But, but that's to relieve some of the burden off the students, doing it as a straight $10.
Any other comments, Judy?
In thinking about trying to find other sources of revenue to tackle the suggestion Christie has, as I understand the proposal from the Administration, there is no property tax increase.
That's correct.
And that would be another place to look for revenue. Why are we putting it all on the students if we're going to need to generate some revenue? And so one of the things I'd like to think about with the Board is, is a 1% tax increase. And I don't have the numbers for that. Would that give us, thank you. In my papers, I can't find it now, but good job. Okay, would it generate enough money to help fill in the idea of step increases?
No.
Ron? Let's make sure, make sure we understand, Christie Myers, is that we, we...
Three, oh, okay.
Christie Myers, we had a forgone tax that was done about five years, five years ago?
I think that's...
Five years ago, a 2.4 million, is that right?
Yes.
That was an expense to fund the property. That has been paid back in full and now has a balanced budget of how much, Ron?
At the end of this year, about $6 million.
So we have six, we paid back the 10, we have $6 million. We're still collecting that burden of those taxes, it's still on our taxpayers here, with an understanding that, that we are not going to pass another tax increase on. So, so every tax increase that we took from 2000 or any additional burden that we put on them from 2006 until now has been on top of the 2.4. So it's multiplied, multiplied. Is that not true?
It would be, have been on top of the 2.4, yes.
So for us to even consider going to our taxpayers, I'm all for going back to our taxpayers, but let's give them back their 2.4 million of forgone taxes that we used.
Mr. Chair? I actually agree with Mr. Nielsen, but no taxes.
Write that, write that down.
I, you're right, we have other revenue.
Except by me.
And usually this Board doesn't want to talk about the other revenue because we tuck it away into our capital improvement fund. But we have the revenue in that forgone tax that, to fund what our obligation is to, I believe, our step increases. You know, we have to make equal investments into our property and into our employees. It's an equal investment. We're not talking about a COLA. And just for the record, I believe the cost of living right now in Cootney County this year is going to be at about a 2%. And we're not even talking about that. We're just talking about funding the salary structure that we agreed to, per Board policy, two years ago.
Any other comments? I have a, maybe a couple of comments and a question. Because I, I put some value in the recommendations from the President's Council and the President in terms of what they recommend for a budget. And they did not recommend funding the step increases this year. And when asked about that, if I got it right, I was told basically that we, we are in the top third of the colleges in the Northwest area here in terms of our salary. And although that doesn't mean every individual, it does mean that as they calculate those statistics, our institution is in the top third. There have been comments about whether or not we are paying a livable wage. We may or may not be, but we are in the top third of the colleges in the Northwest area here. I don't think us not giving a step increase for one year is an abandonment of any obligation. When I read the policy, it didn't say that we had to give a step increase every year. It just said if we did, it went across the Board to all the steps. So there's no, no commitment in the policy. And I would honor that, quite frankly, if I thought that that was what it was. But my understanding is, and I think I asked that to be reviewed, to see if that was the way it was interpreted by the Administration. And that's the reason they made the, the recommendation that they did of no step increase was because it's not an obligatory contribution every year. It's if it's made, it's made in a uniform way in which it's set out in the policy. The, we talk about a number of things as we talk about funding. The forgone taxes, yes, we have continued to take those. But we've made a commitment to put those in a building fund and use those for the building of the facilities that we need. And right now, we're looking at professional technical. If we want to back off on our commitment to professional technical and to using those forgone taxes only for capital improvements, I suspect we can do that. But that's not been the history of this Board. We, we have committed that so that we could move forward on developing professional technical facilities. And we've embarked on a fairly major investigation to try and determine where we're going to build that and to what extent we're going to build it. So I, it, I would, I would hesitate, I hesitate to fold that into this discussion because this discussion, I think, seems to be within the guidelines that have been proposed by the President's Cabinet, by the Administration, of no step increase and no tax increase. And that they could set forth a budget that would allow us to move into this upcoming year with even anticipating a 5% reduction in... allow us to move into this upcoming year with even anticipating a 5% reduction in enrollment that they could live within that budget. And I appreciate that the faculty and the staff work hard here. No question about it. No question about the fact that they're entitled to a decent wage. But when they're in the top third, I think that is a decent wage. And I, I would hope that our looking at this in terms of holding it back this year doesn't mean that it's gonna be held back every year. It has been held back in the past for various reasons probably that we'll never be able to recapture. But the fact that we're proposing holding it back this year is not inconsistent with the fact that it's been held back in the past for varying reasons. So I would hope that as we move forward, we can kind of keep our eye on, this budget is designed under the guidance of the President's or the administration, and they've recommended no step increases this year but column increases and trying to hold a budget in line and not increase the tuition too much and not increase the property taxes. I think the idea of not increasing the property taxes this year is merit because we, we very likely will have to go to the voters. If we, if we expect to get this professional technical facility funded, we're probably gonna have to go to the voters. And we're gonna need their allegiance. And to raise the tax and then go to them for a tax increase or at least a bond issue, I think we would risk maybe losing that. So I think this is a good move this year in order to show that we're good stewards for the trust that's been given to us and we move forward in a measured way. Ron?
I share your position, Ken, in that we have increased our taxpayers from 7 million to 14 million. So it's a substantial increase in a six-year window. I've been involved with the taxpayers on self taxing. This was, was not a vote by the people on this 7 million that we imposed on the college. I'm not saying it's not the wrong decision, but we did not do that. But I've been involved where the voters came out in force and self-imposed a tax on themselves for a window to be able to do that. So like you, Ken, if we, if we don't go to the well with them on everything that we do, we go to them with a specific project with a specific mission, I believe this community will come together and support that. And I don't want to go to the well one time and then they say, you're done. We're not gonna do this anymore. So let me just ask you one question, Ron, while I have the mic, is how many proposed reduction in headcount are we proposing for to this budget year on there?
I would say FT is about 400. Are you talking about the-
The reduction from last year till this proposed, there are a number of reductions that are in this budget, or proposal.
For our rev, from our revenue sources, Ron, or?
No, no, the headcount, the headcount from, faculty headcount from last year's budget to this proposed budget.
I don't think there's any change in it, is there?
No. So we have, so I guess my question is, I think we posed at the workshop, is that we're reducing 5% of, and I think Mr. Dunlap pointed out that it isn't proportioned 5% here was this, but we still have 5% less students in the classroom. And we're not proposing any reduction in our faculty headcount. And yet we want to now go and step them up. I gotta say that we have to find some way to balance this budget with a reduction in headcount and revenue for this college.
Hold it.
Yeah, maybe I can help clarify that. We don't have a reduction in the full-time employment of faculty or staff, but we will have a reduction in the part-time faculty and staff based on the number of students we served. And I think that's what Lita was trying to describe or did describe earlier this evening is that as enrollment increases or decreases, we increase or decrease that adjunct workforce to serve that need. And so we have part-time faculty or adjunct faculty that will, when we cancel a class or don't schedule a class, those are the ones who will not be working to teach those classes. And one of the charts we handed out last time showed the full-time faculty and staff. And that's been pretty constant over the years, but it's the part-time and adjunct that have gone up or down based on enrollment and budget constraints. And so I think that gets to part of your, your question there.
Okay. Todd, do you have a question?
Well, I was just thinking it might be good for a point of reference as we were reviewing where we stood in that report from the mountain states, which if I recall was Arizona, up through Nevada, Colorado, Montana, Idaho, that swath there, that while we were in the upper third and in some instances in the upper, half of the upper third, if I recall, seemed to me our two sister schools in the state were fairly bit below us.
That's correct.
So I mean, not to, just being relative to them has tons of meaning, but I do like the idea that we are compensating our, our faculty and staff in a way that compares, compares well against them anyway.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
There was some salary data that was provided to the entire board. And you will see that not everyone's in the upper third. There's 120 staff that are below the midpoint of their range. But I have an additional point. We had discussed tuition and fees. That was my original proposal. It wasn't, certainly wasn't a tax increase. Or I'd be very interested in working within our budget with our, with our 2.6 million capital improvement fund. But I think that's off the table for this board. So I proposed a $5 increase in tuition, which back in April was actually part of the documentation provided by the President's Cabinet, five to $10 window of tuition. If you look at the tuition and it looks like we don't have yet the information from CSI what they might increase their tuition, but they're at 1320. NIC was at 1423. And CWI is a full $200, $210 ahead of us at 1632. So if we were to charge $10 in tuition, we'd be at 1433. We would still be incredibly low. We'd be able to fund the faculty and staff step as I believe is our obligation to do that. When we accepted the salary schedule, we said, you start with us, we find value in you as an employee, you stick with us, this is where you're going to end up. You might tonight, by freezing the salary step, find some short-term gains. You probably will for one year. But at some point, we might find ourselves back where we were a few years ago, where we have to play catch-up. At some point, you have to play catch-up. I once again reiterate, we're not in a crisis right now. We could work within our options here with tuition or our own budget and we could fund the step.
Make sure I understand. Is that $5 that she's referring is gonna take it up, this, that's per credit, right?
Yes.
So what, that increase wouldn't be $10. From 1423 to 1433, it would be how much?
That's based on 12 credits, isn't it?
Right. So that's $120.
That would be $120 a year at, for the $5, yes.
Actually, per semester, if it's a 12-credit semester.
It's $60. At the 5, Todd, it'd be 120.
Right, but at the 10-
Yeah, it'd be 120 for the 10.
Yeah. So if that's the, and that's the minimum for full-time is 12 credit hours, right?
Yes.
Okay. There's a, there's a motion on the table. It's been seconded. We've had some discussion on it. Any further discussion? Do you want to reread the motion? Judy, did you have some discussion?
I, I've heard you all reject the proper tax increase and so be it. But I would remind us that we're not just talking professional technical. We're talking about an event center, a joint-use building, even the Dyke study, whatever comes of that. There's just a whole lot of things coming up that rather than same catch-up phenomena for salaries will be the case with facilities as they come along. We have set aside some for capital improvements that, that we've agreed on, but I don't think that will cover all the things that are coming along in the future. So I just have to put my plug in for that at 1%. Your motion, I guess we ought to repeat because that looks like that's-
That's the motion that's on the table.
-worth flavor for the source of revenue to do something, which in your suggestion is for salaries.
Could you read the motion, please, Ron?
As I understand, the original motion was a motion to adopt the 2013 budget proposal. There is a motion to amend that motion. And the motion to amend is, is to amend to increase the per-credit tuition, $5 to fund step increases. And then, and then the original budget proposal, as I recall, did it, it already included a $5 per credit to fund the equipment.
Say the last part again.
This was an additional five for step increases. Correct. So, so the motion to amend is a motion to increase the tuition, $5 per credit to fund step increases.
Everybody understand the motion? We ready to vote? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. The motion fails. Okay. Now, we have, we still have the basic budget, but we had some things that were not included because we were working from that earlier. And the-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
How long do you have, Ron? Because at the rate we're going, how much longer do you think we're gonna be? Because I would maybe recommend a five-minute break. We've been going for two and a half hours or whatever.
All right. The prerogative of the chair then, I'll just say we can take a five-minute break.
Thank you, sir.
Unfold her.
Okay, we're back in session after our brief recess. We're back now with the, the motion to adopt the main budget. And this is, again, the budget that we went through on our first reading. And my understanding is that there were two fee structures, three fee structures, excuse me, that weren't in this. One was the $22,000 column increase, correct?
That's correct.
And so we need a motion to include the $22,000 for a column increase into this budget.
Mr. Chair, so moves.
I'll second that.
Right. Is there any discussion? Go ahead.
May I just ask something for clarification? Is the $22 included in the proposed budget?
Twenty-two, the $22,000-
It's an add-on to the base budget.
It's add-on to the base budget, an expenditure add-on to the base budget.
So that was part of the list.
So it's a motion to amend.
Everything's from the base budget forward.
Yes, this is a motion to amend the base budget to add $22,000 for column increases.
Exactly.
Wasn't that projected earlier on the screen? Is one of the things we're doing? Would you put it back up there? Because I need all the visual aids I can get at this hour. Thank you. So right, what, so far, Mr. Chair, on the recommend, of the budget we have, we're talking about the bottom item, which is a salary column movement of $22,000.
Correct.
Thank you.
And that's been moved and seconded, that that, the budget be amended to, to add that? And any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. The next item that was not included in this base budget, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Ron, I don't want to go down the wrong path, but there's a student recreation fee of $3?
Nope.
Well, that's a fee, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this $5 per credit hour was in as a recommendation, but not in the dollar figures on the first reading. So that has to be the $5 per credit hour increase to provide the equipment fund has to be approved.
So we need a motion to increase the tuition by $5 per credit hour and that money is to be dedicated to equipment replacement and a similar fund.
And Myers so moves the adoption of that recommendation.
Right. Need a second? No second?
They're still thinking. Give them more time to think.
I'm waiting for somebody else to second it so I can ask a question. So-
I have some discussion too.
Well, we need a second.
What's that?
We need a second so you can have a discussion on it.
Or it just dies.
That's right. It's gonna die without a second.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna second that in an effort to open the discussion.
Now we have it.
And so what I'd like to do now that we, we have a first and a second, again, Ron, for clarification, is we have no means to build a reserve for replacing of this contingency setup for equipment. And this is a fund that will be set aside for the sole purpose of replacing of equipment. When you get into the word emergencies and things like that, what's the limitation of that funds to use for, I guess would be my question?
We proposed it to be replacement of academic and other equipment on campus that, that we've installed in the classroom. It's basically for, for teaching purposes. It, like our IT fund is becoming, it's close to the end of its useful life and needs to be replaced. And we haven't had that in place before.
And again, the amount of money that would be generated from this five, additional $5 is how much?
Approximately $600,000, Ron.
Per?
Per year.
Per year, per year.
And what is the estimated need for this up and coming year as far as just funding the cost of this equipment alone?
Joe might be believing that.
Joe?
Yeah, that, the, the cost for this coming year, and we've already developed equipment lists for what the needs are, is close to $400,000. The remainder would go into a fund that can be carried forward to establish that reserve so that if there's an emergency, and a good, good example, and I think we gave this last time, was that in our chemistry department, we have a spectrograph that's a $26,000 piece of equipment. And it's been used for year after year and it's on its last leg. And it could quit any day. And there aren't replacement parts for it. And so we would, in addition to funding up that instructional media and equipment, it would also be available for emergencies or contingencies should equipment die on us or if we were to start, let's say, another career and technical program that needed funding for equipment.
Okay. Thank you.
Judy?
Well, I think I heard you, Ron, in describing this equipment, you said academic. And I was gonna pause and say, hopefully it's not limited to academic. You just mentioned professional technical.
Academic and vocational equipment are on the list that the President talked about that we have.
Professional, technical.
It would be for instructional equipment. So for example, it could not be used by facilities to buy a new lawnmower should we need one. This is a, being paid for by student tuition and therefore it's for instructional equipment that could be used for both academic and career and technical.
Okay, that was important. Thank you.
Christie?
Yes, thank you for that clarification. Also, I'm trying to understand, is this, this is one time this year. What happens next year?
That same amount of money would go into that fund next year. This would be ongoing. Is this not something we can get and say, okay, we got it from you one year, now we're gonna bury the $5 increase into the fee? This is a fund that'll have a separate line item that'll be established each year.
So it could grow quite large?
Yes, it could.
And it would only ever be used for equipment?
That's the, that's the proposal to the boards. Unless they get, you know, unless we come back with a proposal.
We could have done that with our step increases, to say, could have easily been done. So, yeah, I think you guys heard me. So you propose how much would be spent every year out of this? Are you saying you don't know?
400 this year.
No, this year.
We know that this year, going into this next year, is approximately $400,000. And that could vary. And so if there is additional funding that is not used in one year, it would be carried forward as part of a contingency going into the following year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, Judy?
So how big is big enough?
The IT equipment replacement, which is just computers, is what, five or six, $700,000 a year. In that $400 equipment request, what we haven't had IT develop yet is a replacement schedule for the electronic equipment that's in the classrooms right now. So my guess is it's gonna, it would sit at least initially, close to a half a million dollars a year once that schedule's developed.
A comment is that I, we as a board toured every single one of your PTE classes and it was pretty, pretty sad where some of the, the equipment was outdated and, and they were, had maintenance nightmares on there. So I think this is a, is a good reserve. It's 1% of the budget to, and we're- It's 1% of the budget to, and we're, it's a small portion of what it takes for us to maintain current machinery and equipment.
Judy?
And maybe I have some new words on this, because machinery and equipment, is this then provide funding for welding machine, equipment if we need it?
Instructional, yeah.
So, in full of sense of, of not just the PowerPoint to teach from it, but the equipment from which you can operate, how to learn how to operate the equipment, okay?
Majority of the equipment on this year is listed, the president talked about, is professional, technical equipment.
So, I second my second.
You feel better about your second?
Oh, no question.
And one other thing to add on to this, I, we had a discussion last year at budget time, that we don't have a depreciation schedule. We have not set up a fund in the past to provide for anticipated and certain replacement of equipment into the future. And this was an attempt to do that, so that we didn't get to a point in time where all of a sudden, we got a $6 million bill, and we don't, and we'd have to make a special allotment. This is planning ahead. Is that...
Yes.
And, and the younger guy that will replace you next year, we should have this contingent, or the, or the lady that's going to replace you will have, I'm sure, a list of, of equipment that's on that replacement list that will be tapping into this, into the budgets that will be plugged in.
I think the administration will develop a more complete list than, than what we even got this year with this one. Again, most of the equipment on that list is professional, technical equipment. I know there's another whole side that you've seen in the classroom technology that our esteemed IT director would tell you needs to be replaced, too. So, it's not going to be inexpensive, but I think this, if we start now, this will cover it. And you've, you've already approved that on the other side for facilities in the deferred maintenance fund that we started about two years ago to replace carpet and things like this. This is just the other side of what needs to happen.
Any further discussion? Ready for a vote? All in favor? Are you all familiar with the motion? All in, go ahead.
Let me read, please say, "Motion to amend the original motion to increase the tuition $5 per credit hour for the instructional equipment replacement fund."
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. The next item that I understand is not in this total budget that we saw on the first reading, was the student rec fee of $3.
Student, student rec.
Student fee recommendation of $3 per, is it headcount?
Right.
Student activity fee at $3 per FTE.
For FTE, $3 per FTE student activity fee. And that, they were talking earlier, would fund the increase or number of new clubs and the leadership training for the, for ASNC.
Okay.
That's what this, this $3 would do. And that's a recommendation that comes from the students that PC decided to support.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion?
Yes.
To adopt the $3 fee per semester to fund the 10 new clubs.
Meyer, I'll second that.
Any discussion?
Just to confirm, this is a student suggested fee? This is not being...
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
It's always a comfort when we sign them up for it.
Any other discussion?
Oh, and they're also looking to tax themselves another 90 or 100 bucks a pop, too. Hope these kids realize what a big bite of the apple they're proposing to take.
The whole apple.
Telling you what, they're going to hope they don't choke on the core.
For all of us, our kids are grown up, that is unlike you. Good luck, Todd.
Any other discussion on the motion? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Now, were there any other changes to the overall budget that we saw in the first reading? That we haven't covered with amendments yet?
No.
Alright, so now, we need, we've already got a motion and a second to approve the overall budget as amended. Any discussion on the overall budget as amended? Alright, you ready to vote? All in favor of the overall?
I'm sorry, I had one comment. Just for the record, I, I still oppose extra charges for the 13th, 14th, 15th, and 16th credit.
Okay.
That's all I got to say.
With that, any other, if there are no other comments or questions, let's vote on the motion.
And maybe just for clarification, if we take last year's budget before grant money and just take that bucket of revenue and expenses, what was last year's numbers and what we're proposing this year's numbers?
How much did it increase? Is that what you're looking for?
Dollars? It would, the increase is from closing the window is 1.2 million. There's $130,000 in there for new property on the rolls. That would be an increase over the amount that we had last year. Am I missing? Am I missing one?
There's the state funding.
Oh, the state funding that came in at about...
$250.
$250?
Yeah.
$250,000 from the state. So, those would be the increases in revenue over our current year. Is that...
And that $250 was a surprise? I mean, were you expecting that?
We never expect any, honestly, we weren't expecting. That came in as a, 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 something that we submitted to them that held, that was there directly to fund dual credit. It actually came back to us to fund, most of those were dual credit, and about $70,000 was for benefits. Is that...
Benefits and enrollment workload adjustment.
Benefits and enrollment workload adjustment. But we really have not, in the past years, been funded by the state anything other than the workload adjustment and the benefits. So, this was money that we did not expect to get from a part of it, anyway.
And in this proposal, what is, is there any, what is the changes in the benefit package associated?
Believe the change, Laura, you probably can just, but I believe the overall change is about 1%, just at 1%.
Which is related to health insurance increases?
Yeah, there's about a 1% increase in the cost of the health insurance package.
Anything else that was in that?
Retirement increased.
About 1%.
About 1%. And that was, those were, I believe, the only two increases in our benefits, Ron.
Judy?
Just another question, I want to come back on, on how are we doing on deferred maintenance now? In your list of things that we were working on, that comes into the planned budget.
I think we're in good shape. I can supply you, I can send to you what we did last year and what we accomplished this year based upon what we budgeted for deferred maintenance.
And at least at the university level, there's always a struggle, they're never caught up. Are you feeling like we're where we ought to be?
I think we're getting closer if you don't include the large ticket items like HVAC and the actual buildings. But when you look at carpet and fountains and the minor deferred maintenance, yes, I think we've, in the two years, we've made some pretty good strides on that.
But it's not the minor things that bite you, it's those big ones.
Well, I, I think the minor ones have an impact on how the students view the campus. You know, if you don't have decent paint, decent carpet, and, and we have made some, I call them minor, but I, I'm not calling capital expenditures, but less than capital expenditures. I don't have them, but I'll send them to you. I think we've done well. I think we've done well with it.
So, our roofs are all tuned up, and we have a program for how you often, okay, thank you.
Ron, I, I understand a 1% price increase for health insurance. Everybody's health insurance is going up, but what is this 1% increase from retirement? Where is that coming from?
State mandated, state mandated.
Okay.
Christie?
Mr. Chair, to follow up on what Mr. Nielsen was asking, so, this looks like, revenue-wise, we're up about 1.5 million this year, overall?
Somewhere in that, yes, I think so. I think that's close. Probably a little bit more than that with those, yeah, about 1.5 million.
Thank you.
And that's going to change because the 130,000 that we budgeted for new property on the rolls, that's our estimate based on the prior year. I think it's pretty conservative. I think there'll be a little more revenue than that coming in based on what's happening now in the economy. But the other figures are set, pretty much set. And the 1.2 million could vary depending on enrollment and depending on credit. So, that's another reason for us to be careful and watch this budget pretty close. That 1.2 will vary based on enrollment.
Any other questions? We ready to vote on the, accepting the overall budget as amended? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. And I think that gets us down to new business.
Ron goes dancing.
Calendar?
She's just getting used to the chair. It fits her well. What's so funny, Ron? She has your back the whole time.
Mr. Chair, the, the last item of business is the reading of the proposed calendar for the trustees next year. There was one change, which is in April, because it conflicted with the annual Washington, DC trip that GSI normally sponsors and that we participate in. And so, it's as indicated in your tab, and that's the best I can describe it. We have a motion to amend the calendar?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Before we go on to the next agenda item, Ron, I want to ask for a clarification. On the budget that just, we just adopted, was the auxiliary services included in that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just a question. As we move along and we get maybe into the first week of September, and we have a little more idea of what our enrollment is, at that point, we would still be able to come back and request an amended budget?
Yes.
For instance, we could, if we have revenue, we could look at the step increase? Thank you.
But I what, Ron?
Circling.
And by the, excuse me, Mr. Chair, and by the same token, we have had a discussion in president's cabinet that should enrollment and revenues go south, that budget managers need to be prepared to reduce their budgets next year by a commensurate amount. And so, you're absolutely correct. We need to wait and see what happens with the revenue based on enrollment, and then we can adjust.
Great, thank you.
I think as a general policy, and I talked to Ron about this last year, we do budgets once a year, and it's healthy to do them once a year for planning purposes. But if there are catastrophic events that occur, then the budget can also come back before, always come back before the board for adjustment. The next agenda item, I guess, is the president's, or the board chair's report. And I only have a couple of things to report. President Dunlap and I had a meeting with the tribal council a couple of weeks ago. It was, it was really a very nice experience. They use a number of traditions as we go down and we meet with them, and we were acquainted with some of those traditions, anyway, and tried to abide by them. And it was, we were very warmly received. We talked to them about a number of issues. One was coming for the dedication of the park this summer. Also, we've invited them, if they had a tribal flag, that we would display it on campus as part of our overall and ongoing cooperation with the tribe, and a number of other issues, including putting together an issue that this board had talked about, which was a joint board meeting. And we asked them to consider that. They seemed very, very open to it, and maybe even doing it, trading back and forth each year and making it an annual affair. So, I expect to hear from them, and we'll try and set up a joint meeting with the tribal council here in the near future. We also had a meeting down in Boise with the board chairs and presidents of the other community colleges. We do this, in fact, as we've decided to structure it and have three or four meetings a year, probably in conjunction with the state board of education meetings, to discuss common issues that we have with the other community colleges. That's proved a very, very helpful association of the three community colleges, getting together and agreeing on things before we go to the, the legislature, or before we speak out on any policy issues that may affect us jointly. One of the things that we, we've discussed down there, that we've discussed before, is out-of-county tuition. And I can tell you, our discussions are such that we, we will struggle to find a mutual solution to out-of-county tuitions. The, just the mathematics of how, how that, how much is received by each of the colleges and how it's calculated, and how they build it into their, their budgets, particularly the College of Western Idaho, in terms of the way it's funded, makes it very difficult to try and determine what's the cost per student. Indeed, if you use formulas that we would like to use, they may be making money at the $500 per student. They're not losing money, they're making money, and we're losing money on it. So, having looked at that, and we're still going to continue to look at it, because we have a meeting set up in about three weeks, two weeks, with the Association of Cities and Counties, because this topic has been broached with them, and they want to try and find some solution to the problem. And if we can arrive at some kind of suggested solutions, then we're going to continue to work at it. But if not, we may end up looking at a solution for ourselves. And that might include tuition differentials between in-county and out-of-county Idaho students. It may include other potential solutions that may come up. So, that is still a, an issue that all the community colleges are talking about. The taxpayers here in Cootney County feel the brunt of the subs, they're subsidizing out-of-county students more than either one of the other community colleges. I think it's a fair statement. So, it's a problem that is, that is more cued up here than it is in the, in the South. The, we're trying to set up some travel to the other professional, technical sites. We talked about that a little bit earlier. That may be part of a, just an ongoing inquiry with the board about trying to get educated about what best to do with our professional, technical issue that's, that's going to come up for a vote, hopefully, in the reasonably near future. And in light of that, I wanted to kind of ask the board, quite honestly, where do you want to go next? Because we've had our public forums, we've had a study that has its controversial aspects, and some people agree with it, and some people don't, and some people agree with different parts of it. But the next step, I think, is something where we have to explore what are the financing mechanisms that would be available for, for us to do any of this. In, in advance of us doing anything on that, I have inquired of some bond counsel and also other people who might be involved in financing to maybe come into a workshop and acquaint us with the different devices that might be available for financing this project, so that we have that available as we then go on to make our decisions. There may be other things that this board wants to address as we prepare to make the decision, not just about where we go, but what, how much of, how much we build, whatever the location is. So, I'd like to inquire of the board, quite frankly, if they're, if they're interested in having a, a workshop on financing, and if we should include in that any other subjects that we should be looking into. Any comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Could we, could we wrap it into the same workshop as the student rec center, just to, just to talk about financing?
Sure.
So that we're not all over the calendar?
Well, yeah, I mean, we can. And first of all, is it something that this board wants to look at?
I think that's appropriate. We need to understand what our options are.
And there may be some parameters with it, too, as to, different options have different parameters, and we'll need to learn them.
I mean, if there's universal interest in that, then we can go ahead and start inviting some people that will bring that information to us. And I really would appreciate any input from the board in terms of what kind of information you might be seeking. So, we don't have to do that right here. kind of information you might be seeking, so we don't have to do that right here, you can get with me later, and, and we can set it up, but if we're gonna coordinate it with the other workshop, then we don't need to set something special up, we can just talk about the content. Any comments on that at all?
Well, there's no, no question, Ken, that that, we've given that our number one priority, and, and as we go through, uh, facility needs, and we go through location discussions, and, and, and have a clear understanding of the number of kids that aren't served because we don't have the facilities, I think it's time that we look at all of our options, um, that would require us to get educated, um, and be prepared to, to see how that would fit in, under the program that we're talking about. So, yeah, I'm, I'm all for it, and would love to see it sooner than later, so.
Then, uh, we'll go ahead and set that up, and make it in conjunction with the workshop that we already, um, passed by motion today. Uh, the last thing that I wanted to make mention of was, um, like Ron mentioned earlier, all of us were at the graduation, and it is such a stimulating, um, and exciting experience, it really is. After a couple of years, you get to know people, and you get to see faces that are coming up there, um, and, and it, just the pomp and ceremony of it, I mean, when, uh, when Quanta Matheson gets up and gives his, his, um, benediction, I guess you would call it, in, in the Coeur d'Alene language, I mean, I just get the hair standing up the back of my neck, uh, the singing, the, um, the bagpipes, I love bagpipes. Everything, you know, is so exciting, I mean, it's the kind of thing that you see at once, and you look forward to it with such, uh, such joy, so, uh, I wanna congratulate the college for the, for the great display that's put on, and, and offering all the students, you know, that kind of congratulatory process as they move to graduation. I think it, I've graduated from three colleges now, and I never have a grad, I've never had a graduation like that. That, that is great, so, thank you, NIC. And, um, with that, uh, the last item on the agenda is remarks for the good of the order. Any remarks, Ron?
Just for information is K-Tech, uh, hired a new executive director today, uh, his name is Tim Fortune, he was a faculty member at K-Tech, and so, he's very familiar with there, and what the best part about Tim, he's got an incredible story. A kid that went, struggled through high school, got out of high school, um, decided he wanted to get into a career, started in his career, found out that the career inspired him to learn more, so he went back to school, and, uh, through that process, he got a bachelor's degree, started teaching in the field, he was, went on to get two masters, and so, when you look at him, and, and you look at his road, that what he's done, he's gonna be an inspiration for, uh, these high school kids, but more importantly, is that he will perpetuate these kids when they graduate with their certificate of completion and their high school diploma, and encourage them to go on to their continued education. So, we've always says that one of the things that NIC probably, uh, doesn't realize, that they will windfall a huge inflow of students that they wouldn't get, because they're gonna get the taste of the first part of it at K-Tech, so if you get a chance to meet Tim Fortune, he's an incredible human being with a great story, and will be a great motivator for kids, so.
Thank you.
Kristi?
Ron, can we, will you bring him here?
Yeah.
Sure.
So we can meet him?
Yeah, he's a soft-spoken guy with a great story, so I'd love to bring him, so.
Well, maybe we'll put him on the agenda, and he can give us a status report on K-Tech also, at the same time, yeah.
Couple of the highlights, I think we mentioned the June 7th breakfast, uh, that was for three, the three colleges to be talking to business. Uh, I've asked our chairman and president to schedule some agenda time on our June 26th meeting, for the president of the Idaho Business of Education Group, we've now hired a, a CEO for that to come visit with us about what IBE is doing, and then, the following morning, on the 27th, we will be welcoming business people to a breakfast again, to hear more about how educators and business in Idaho can help with the, um, recruitment of students and the, what the needs are and what the program should be. One of the idiot facts, it's, it's kinda fun, is Idaho Public Television, uh, uh, general manager Peter Morrell is, is retiring, uh, but he also commented recent, at their last meeting, that the most watched, watched public television per capita, uh, station in the country is in Idaho. That's it.
Any other comments for the good of the order? If so, we stand adjourned.